And as you can see on this landscape plan, which is just the first review landscape plan, you can see landscaping north of the ditch and the easement. But at second review, and then when this comes before you for a public hearing, you will see landscaping in that red area as well, which will be low shrubs, shrubs that can be driven over, and no trees. The trees are all located within, north of that ditch, concrete ditch, and on the site in front of the buildings to screen the buildings. What you'll also see, when it comes back before a public hearing, is more trees in front of this unit in the southeast corner of the property, which currently shows no trees, but that will also be screened. So that is the landscape plan. So I wanted to focus on more tonight, though, is other than the site design itself, are the building elevations. The applicant is proposing four building types, and they're all two stories. There are clusters of units where there's six units in one cluster. There's units with four clusters, and then I believe there, I think it's just four and six unit clusters. And as you can see on the site plan, here are the clusters. So you have a four-unit cluster here, a four-unit cluster here, and then here's your six-unit clusters in the middle, and then some more four-unit clusters along Gilbert Road. So here's one of those building types, and you can see the majority of the architecture's more of a contemporary style with a lot of flat roofing and canopies over the windows and some vertical and horizontal massing in certain locations. And the materials are stucco, predominantly stucco with some stone veneer on some of those, massing some of those elevations. So here's another elevation. Here is a six cluster with six units in it, and you can see a lot of flat roofing and the metal rooftopper. And here's another cluster, and this is all outlined in your staff report, and I was able to put these graphics in your staff report, and it shows some of the comments that we are making as well in your staff report. And then here's the last building cluster. These last two buildings are roof only. So some of staff's concerns, and the colors and materials, oh, I forgot to mention the colors. The colors are all predominantly tanish, beige-type colors. So some of the concerns in our staff report that we had listed, that we are concerned with, that we would like to have your input on, are items such as the flat roofing and the massing. The, we feel that that some of the massing, especially on this elevation, building type five, the second floor, seems like it needs to be, it seems a little, a little kind of overmassed on the top, a little heavy on the top, and we feel that maybe that could be opened up a little bit more. And then also, some of the roof lines, we feel that a lot of these buildings, especially these two, type four and type five, are too flat with not a lot of roofline variation. And buildings type five and four and five as well have some materials on the second floor, the stone veneer that seems to be a little bit out of place. Typically, you see those materials on the ground floor more at eye level versus way up high, and that kind of contributes to the heaviness of some of the massing on some of these elevations. Roof canopies, we're concerned that there's not enough roofline variation with the canopies. It's only, they're only on certain spots of the elevations. Building type three, as you can see, this one appears to be a little, the canopy's only on one side, so we feel it's a little unbalanced. The color, the color scheme, we're concerned with the color scheme, that there's not enough color variation, and that it could better complement some of the development in the immediate area. If you look at the apartment complex to the north of Gilbert Town Square Shopping Center, some of the materials, maybe another material or two on the building, so there isn't just stucco and stone as predominant materials, maybe add some material variations. Windows, we feel there's not enough high-quality window treatments, and also there's not enough window variation in the size of the windows. So that is basically it in a nutshell, as far as a lot of the concerns that we have mentioned in our staff report. I may have missed one. And then, oh, the other major concern before I move on is, is some of these blank, some of the wall, the elevations, the left and right elevations are, need more articulation, especially building types four and five, which face Gilbert Road. It looks like the right elevations will be the ones facing Gilbert Road, and we feel that those don't have enough articulation, being so highly visible to the public. And also, the SES panels and the meter boxes need to be completely screened. And then garage doors also need to have some more variation in the garage doors. So as you can see, we have a lot of concerns with the elevations, and we would love to get your input on the elevations and the articulation of them, and also the color palette. That is pretty much, that concludes my presentation, so if you have any questions for me, that'd be great.
All right.
I'll throw the site plant, the landscape plan back up for you again, if you want to see it.
Thank you, Keith.
Yep, thank you.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions or feedback relating to the information that they were requesting? Jan?
Yeah, this is Nathan Mack, and I have some comments.
Okay.
Nathan, I'll get to you. We called on Jan, or Commissioner Simon, sorry.
Go ahead.
So Keith, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, so thank you for the presentation. I actually, I would agree with you. I actually like the look of building, the building number one. I think that the articulation there is well done. The back of it, the rear elevation, I'm not 100% sold on that. It actually feels more like a, I don't know, I'm going to say like a Target store or something along those lines, but I'm not sure that I really care for that. I don't, I don't necessarily care for three, four, and five. I feel like with you, the roofline is just so flat and stagnant, it actually feels very institutional to me. I feel like once you get all those in there stacked on top of each other, it's, I just don't know that I care for the look and feel of that. So if there was something they could do to maybe break up, not make it look so heavy on the top, building number three particularly, I mean, that just looks so thick and very institutional when I look at it. From a color perspective, I would agree. I think, you know, if they could, you know, add something to the palette, make it a little bit more modern and go along with maybe the apartment complexes that are there in the center, make it flow a little bit more with what's happening there. I think it would go a little bit better.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Simon. Commissioner Alabrandi?
Hi Keith, Phil Alabrandi, how are you tonight?
I'm doing fantastic. Thank you.
I just wanted to, I don't want to repeat what you said, but I just wanted to endorse your analysis on both color palette and elevation. I think that was appropriate, as well as Commissioner Simon's assessment, so I agree with your assessment, and hopefully we can make some adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Caveney, and then Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Macken, would you go now? And then we'll have Commissioners Caveney.
Sure. Yeah, I'm much the same way, just echoing, I think, the concerns. The colors, I don't think fit very well with the modern, more contemporary look. The warm, kind of desert tones, I don't think complement that as much. The canopies, the red canopies, I think I would go with a different color scheme on this building, and then I think articulation would help also. It has a feel of a, maybe like a mixed-use office residential sort of building. And it, I can concur that it has a bit of an institutional feel to it, or more of an office-type feel, rather than a residential. I think we're, it's not quite hitting a mark on several of those elevations and the colors.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Caveney?
Yeah, I think all good feedback. My feedback would be, I actually like independently the colors, but the way they're applied to the building, yeah, I tend to agree, it's just not diverse enough. Like, I really like the roofing material they've selected, that weathered, kind of rust-type look, but then it's not used very much. It's got a few metal awnings, and perhaps those high hats have it, but, yeah, and then everything else kind of blends. I think there needs to be a little more pop, something, some color that just, that brings out the corners, or brings out the variations in the fenestration, that sort of thing. But I do, to me, a lot of them, particularly building five, kind of looks to me like a motel, you know, doesn't it kind of look like a little two-story motel? So, yeah, I think being a residential, modern look, perhaps a little variation, and Keith, I think some of your comments were spot on. The garages kind of seem to be very regimented, there's no real break in either color or finish there. It'd be nice to bring in another stone or two, too. I like the stone they've selected independently on the color palette and material palette, it looks good, but it might be nice to get another accent piece there. So overall, I think, and kind of maybe headed the right direction, but could use some tweaks on the colors, and perhaps, I agree with you, too, too many straight roof lines. There's got to be some play there that breaks this up, and I'm not sure I'm a fan of any of the end views, and especially if we've got Gilbert Road views to those, we probably should make sure that they're a little more attractive. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Caveney. Keith, I just want to follow up. Perhaps timing is your best or worst enemy tonight, depending on who you are, but after having listened to the downtown Heritage District presentation and seeing the eye candy, so to speak, there, and we're only a mile south of that on this project, and we are right across the street from Town Hall, it really deserves to be dressed up some, and to look a little more spiffy, and so I don't know, I would, I have to agree with your analysis that there's more that could be done there. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, I'll turn it back to the chairman.
All right, thank you for taking over on that one. Move along to item four, DR 20-84, Air Guitar, Ashley.
Thank you, Chairman. Let me get my presentation pulled up. Okay, you should be able to see that now. This is DR 2084, Air Guitar. It's located at the northwest corner of Higley and Ray. Just to orient you a bit better, you may recall that last year, we approved epicenter here on these properties surrounding the site. So we're looking at the immediate hard corner of that intersection. It's zoned shopping center, as is much of the intersection here. So this is, this is the last, the last piece of that epicenter, or that agritopia project. It is part of the agritopia PAD. It's a 1.37 acre parcel, again, zoned shopping center PAD, and they are seeking approval of a 5,300 square foot neighborhood market. Tonight, we are just requesting in this study session, feedback on the landscape palette and the color palette, although we're happy to hear any other feedback that you have as I go through the presentation. So looking at the site, again, it's just 1.37 acres, so it is really constrained by its small size. They are meeting their minimum parking requirements. They do need 21 spaces, but they were able to find room for 32 spaces, which is excellent. With their building height, they're proposing a building height of 16 feet 5 inches, but what I wanted to touch on most with this slide was the connectivity, both to epicenter and then just in general access to the site. So epicenter comprises the site surrounding this, and what the applicant has proposed to do is have an exposed aggregate concrete path that leads from their building, and then connects all the way to epicenter. So if you're able to follow my mouse, hopefully you can see that. It connects here at this location, and then they would be able to cross here and connect to the larger epicenter project for some shared use. In terms of access into the site for vehicles, there are two points of access, one on Higley Road and then one on Ray Road. Both of those are planned and being developed by the epicenter project. They're right in, right out, but there are other opportunities for connection on both of those roadways if visitors were to come in at one of the other points, they all connect to this site. In terms of the landscape plan, this was one of the areas that I'm seeking feedback on. As part of staff's first review comments, we asked the applicant to provide greater diversity in their landscaping. Along the street frontages of both Higley and Ray Road, they are proposing just the red push pistache tree. And then internal to the site, along the buildings, north and west sides, they do have some tibu trees. And then for their accent material, just deer grass along those street frontages. And then within the planters, areas, the patio here, and then in these two areas, they do have some aloes. So there are alternates proposed, but along the street frontages, they are just utilizing those two types. As part of our first review comments, they did respond and indicate that they are looking for a, kind of a monoculture design in their landscape palette. So I just wanted to get some commission feedback on whether or not we would like to see a little bit more diversity as staff requested of the applicant. In terms of their elevations, they are proposing a lot of glass on this building, as you can see on the south and north elevations, as well as some standing seam metal in two colors. And then, it's hard to see on these elevations, but there are portions of it that have some perforated metal as well, to just add another texture, if you will. So, for example, this portion of the site is that perforated metal, which you wouldn't be able to tell just by looking at these elevations. So I wanted to make sure that I took a moment to point that out. They also have some wood slats on their patio, so this is at the hard corner of the intersection. You would see these wood slats as just another element to add some diversity to the elevations and the materials. And then there is, again, the glazing on all sides, even the west and east, although not as much on the, as on the north and south. The applicants also provided us some perspectives, which helped to illustrate the large covering that they have over the patio. And in terms of their color palette, this was another item that I'd like some feedback from the commission on. One of my concerns with the color palette is just the, there's quite a lot of the dark metal within the building, and with those large canopies over, I just worry that it might come across even darker than the elevations are showing once shadows come into play. So some feedback on that would be appreciated. And then just for some context for the area, I wanted to showcase the epicenter project that you would be seeing behind, not that this project needs to match that in any capacity, but some coordination. So these, you can see here, utilize some softer color palette. So that was some of the thought process behind maybe some lightening up of that color palette. So again, just those two items is what we're seeking feedback on. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and look forward to your feedback.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this one? Commissioner Caveney?
Hi, Ashley. So, thank you. The landscape palette, I kind of like the monoculture they're talking about, and the way it's oriented on the site, it'll create an interesting grove. I just popped up a couple of images of these red push pistaches, and they're going to be quite colorful. And so having kind of a grove of those might be quite nice. And they do grow full mature about 30 to 40 feet. Obviously, it'll be several years from a 24-inch box till they get there, but I think that could look good. It'll hide the building for a while from Higley, but once they get mature, it'll poke back through, I think, underneath. As far as the color of the building, you know, I think I agree with you that maybe they should bring in a little more agritopia, especially if those trees are going to be either green or red, depending on when they color up. That dark blue material that I'm seeing may not blend well, but I don't mind it. I kind of, I like the modernness of the building. I like how they're doing the roofline, that's really kind of creative. And so I'm almost tempted to let them put together the color scheme they like, too. So I guess I could go either way. I think, I think I'm seeing a grove of red trees around it, so maybe, maybe a little bit more of that earthy feel to it might be appropriate. Yep, that's it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else, Vice Chair?
Thank you, Ashley, for your presentation, and I tend to agree. I mean, this is agritopia, where they have a grove of orange trees out there, and they had different things going on that way, and so the monoculture look for this parcel, it seems to fit, and seems to blend itself well to the agritopia theme and have it themed that way. So I'm okay with that, as I like the structure, I like the building, I like the materials that they've got there. I think I'm okay with how it looks even, so I, as long as it meets guidelines, I'm okay with it.
Anyone else?
This is Nathan Macken.
Hold on, Nathan, we're going to go to Commissioner Alabrandi first, and then we'll hit you afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick note, this is, it's local to me, and this is the last corner to be developed, and I really like the grove look, it'll tie this in, and a heavily trafficked area, and I think it'll be a nice, a nice eye break along that Higley corridor there. So good call on the trees. Colors, I can go either way. They'll be mostly masked by the trees anyway, but I'm looking forward to how this transitions that corner to the agritopia building behind it. So good work, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Macken?
Yeah, I just mostly echo, again, what has already been said on this. No problem with the monoculture. I think the colors, the building, it's exceptional, and particularly, I think it works well with the rest of agritopia, so no problems for me.
Okay, thank you. We're going to keep this study session going. Does anybody else have anything new to add? Okay. Ashley, you good with comments that you received so far?
I am, thank you, Commission.
All right, thank you. Let's move along to item five, UP 20-05, Alta Gilbert at Cooley Station. This is also has DR 20-46, which is design review. Stephanie, please.
Thank you. I'm just going to share my screen really quick. All right, so this is use permit 2005 and DR 2046 for Alta Gilbert at Cooley Station. This is located on the southwest corner of Recker Road and Williamsfield Road. It's part of the Village Center of the Cooley Station area. And red is the site, and just north of it is the Verdier Cooley Station Commercial Center that's currently under construction. And then just a little background with the development plan for Verdier Cooley Station, this site was intended to be multifamily as part of the master site plan for Verdier Cooley Station with the mixed use to the north. And another important feature is this dash arrow line that is meant to be a pedestrian corridor, much kind of like the paseo that Dan Henderson presented earlier with the Heritage District, that will just be meant for pedestrians and bicycles, really non-auto use, that will lead from Williamsfield Road down to the Future Transit Center Station. So this will be part of the project, and another pivotal part of this project is the conditional use permit request. Since this is located in the Gateway Village Center zoning district, there is a conditional use permit required to allow residential on the ground floor. So this site is emphasizing the design of the first floor units, of how the elevations look, so we'll be focusing on that. The design of the site with how the buildings are oriented to kind of create that mixed-use environment once it's built out, and then also the density and the high density of the area. The conditional use permit does need to meet the four findings of fact that are listed on this exhibit, too. So some requested input for tonight are going to be the movement of the parapet height and the use of caps and cornices, the massing of the buildings and how the colors and materials are used to break up the buildings, the overall design, colors and materials of the buildings, and I would also like to focus on the architectural detail and enhancement of the first floor units, and also the side elevations of the carriage units. So this is the site plan here. So this private drive to the north is part of the Verdier Cooley Station site, and the building is oriented, there's one large four-story building, kind of this L shape with a piece that's hanging off along Recker. So this will be four stories. The internal of the site will have garage units, and then the external around the area will have the first floor units that will also have access points out of their patios onto this pedestrian corridor, as well as the Verdier Cooley Station Commercial Center with the sidewalk and parking area to the north, so that those units can have access directly out to the community. This area here is an amenity pool area, and then the carriage units, there are three buildings, they're all three stories. Two of them are around the pool area, and then the other one is located along Recker Road. And then the design of the high density is to have the buildings oriented along the streets and the pedestrian corridor, and have the parking internal to the site. This is 249 units, it's 37 dwelling units per acre, and it's six acres of property. This is the landscape plan, just to kind of show you a better picture of the main building that we want to focus on, just to make sure that we are able to break up the massing of the design of the building, and I'll show you with the elevations. And then this is enhancement of the pool amenity area. For the elevations, I placed the main site plan on these with the red lines to kind of orient you at what you're looking at. So the top elevation is going to be facing along the pedestrian corridor, and then the bottom elevation is internal to the site, so this is the looking south, so this will be seen from the south, and this is kind of where the main entrance is. The colors and materials are very similar and complementary to the Verdier Cooley Station color palette, and they are using a similar brick, like the Fuego Red brick, that is primarily used along the first floor. And I just would like to get comments and input on if you feel like they are using the colors and materials to break up the massing, or if they could focus on certain areas, or any other input of how they could possibly break up the massing for the building. And then on this elevation page, we're looking at, this is what will be seen along Recker Road, and this is where the main entrance into the main office will be. And then this will be seen along the north side of the building, it will be seen from the Verdier Cooley Station Commercial Center. For the carriage units, this, these two images, this will, this middle image will be seen along Recker Road, and there will also be units that have patios facing along Recker Road, and then the internal will have the garage units. And then these are the side elevations, the carriage units are very similar, just different sizes. And then these are the colors and materials, again, very similar to the Cooley Station color and materials palette they pulled from those. And then these are some renderings, so we can go back and look at these, if you have any specific comments you'd like to make. But this is to orient you, this is looking south from the Verdier Cooley Station Center, and then this will be looking along Recker Road, so again, the main entrance here, and these are the carriage units. This is oriented, kind of looking northeast, so this will be along the pedestrian corridor, and then this is looking along Recker into that main entrance, so this is what will be seen primarily along Recker Road. So the focus on the ground floor units, we want to ensure that these units are part of the streetscape and really emphasized in this area. We've kind of brought up a lot of comments about kind of brownstone stoops that are similar to what you would envision in a village-type area. So just wanted to provide some comments from you guys. These, this is the 2D's elevations on the top, so you can see that there are some doors and small stoop areas, but we'd like to encourage a little bit more prominent, so I have supplied some images of just examples in areas that have used architectural details that kind of make the first floor units more pronounced, and also provide larger patio areas, and really make it a prominent standpoint as part areas and really make it a prominent standpoint as part of the elevations. Part of the ordinance that was approved with this rezoning was that a certain amount of transparency does need to be met on the first floor. For the residential, that is 40%. So these exhibits are just showing that they are meeting that 40% transparency with their windows and doors along the first floor. So again, this is the requested input. I don't want to read through all of those, but if you have any specific slides, you can certainly direct me, but thank you for letting me give the presentation.
Okay, thank you for that. Let's just start with the use permit first. Is there any questions or comments regarding the use permit? Okay, I think there's no issues with that, so let's go into the DR side of it. Comments or questions on that? Commissioner Cavaney?
Okay, Stephanie, thank you for that. So to give you the feedback requested here, I think the, I think the parapet heights and the parapet caps are, they vary plenty for this. I don't see any issues as I look at the elevations and the renderings are very helpful as well to see that. I do think they've got enough movement for a building this height to make that not an issue. In fact, I really like the way they've done the cornice caps, or the parapet caps. I think they look very nice. And then going back to your feedback, please. I'm sorry, I didn't remember it. Thank you. Yeah, okay, the massing. I think the color vary, they've got enough colors, they've got four different colors and they vary enough in depth that, and the stone that they've chosen is dark, so I don't think there is any additional need to articulate the massing. I think it does it even for as big a buildings as these are. I think, I think that's fine. I do think the overall design and colors are fine. I think there's enough variation in the colors they've selected to create the different bodies of units that they have there. And then I'm having a hard time really seeing the, how the first floor units create their patios. I like the images that you added that showed how some of those are articulated elsewhere. From what I can see, they've got enough railing and separation to probably be fine, but if you think diving deeper into the floor plans and so forth that more is needed, I'm willing to support that. But I think from what I'm seeing on the elevations, or at least the plans, the plan views, there's probably enough. So I think, I think that was it. So I'm good with this. I think it looks really good and I think they've done a great job of changing things up enough to make it look fine.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Alan Brandy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I really had nothing other than that they really captured the Cooley vibe and this is also local and I'm looking forward to this going up. So nice job with the stoops. I can definitely see a little bit of New York in there. It's very nice.
Anyone else? Yeah, I would agree with that. I think it's a really nicely designed project. I think the 3D help renderings is what really helped me sell it. All right, so do we have anything else or? Okay, I think we're good. Stephanie, are you good?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Move along to item six, DR 20-87, PB Bell Gilbert Commons. Keith?
Yes, Chairman Anderson, members of the Commission, good evening. Crap. I'm having some technical difficulties with my internet, so if you will bear with me for two seconds here, the VPN, our system disconnected on me like a minute ago. So hold on just one second here. I don't know why it kicked me off, like literally two minutes before I was to present here, so I apologize. Okay, now it's being really slow. Okay, so I'm going to try and do this real quick, guys.
Keith, if you think it would be helpful, perhaps I could pull up your presentation for you?
Here, I think I've got it here in a second.
Okay.
It's just it literally kicked me off. I had to re-go back into the VPN. Okay, do you see my presentation?
I did for a second and I don't see it anymore.
Okay. It was there, now it's gone. Okay, how about now?
Says you were starting. Yes.
Okay, you see my presentation now?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you for being patient. I apologize. I know we're in a hurry for to get through this stuff, so. So this project before you now for the study session is the PB Bell Gilbert Commons Project. If you recall, this came before you several months, I believe in the month of March, for the approval of a zone change for this Gilbert Commons Shopping Center, the whole 48 acres. But what we're talking about tonight is the eight and a half acre piece that's, that I'm highlighting right here at the south end of the site. The developer is proposing, well, hold on, the input I'm requesting tonight, I forgot the slide was second, the next one after it, is the, I'm requesting input on the overall design of the site and the design of the apartment elevations. So what the developers are requesting, there's approximately 205 units and these are three-story apartment complexes. There's three buildings. It's, the site plan's a little hard to follow. So I'll show you the landscape plan. I like this, the colors and it makes everything pop. So you have three, three-story buildings. Here's one building here. There's another building here along the south. It's kind of like a C-shaped building. And then you have another building on the east, right over here by the main entrance. So those, those are three-story buildings with a club, with a clubhouse or. And then on the far east side of the project site, you have some, five carriage buildings that are carriage units. So those are, those are two-story buildings with residential on top, of course, and garage space on the bottom ground floor. Throughout the site, you have parking canopies in various locations. And then the amenities are in the central location, portion of the site. You have the pool and the activity center here with a weight room and so forth. And then you have an open lawn and some games and so forth here in the middle. Throughout this, as I, as I, as I get started with the presentation, it's important to note the zone change hearing that took place and, and staff and some of the comments that were mentioned at that hearing by staff and, and things that the applicant has promised or has agreed to work on with town staff. And as this, as this design review process plays itself out, some of those things, I'm just going to mention them very quickly so I can move on and finish this up. Some of those things are the integration of this development with the overall shopping center, with the Kohl's and the shops along Cooper Road to the east. The applicant and has agreed to work with town staff on integration of colors of these shops buildings to make sure that they're more compatible with the, with the proposed color scheme of the apartment complex. They're going to refresh these colors of these buildings. They were going to work, we're going to work with them on refreshing the main entrance of the development off of Cooper Road. Monumentation signage and landscaping, refresh that. And then eventually they'll work on the design of these buildings as well to kind of make them complement as well. But also, also the master site plan of the overall shopping, Gilbert, of the, the Gilbert Commons Shopping Center around it has to be updated to reflect the new land use of the apartment complex and the design of this apartment complex, which will be a separate process. To highlight some of the things that the applicant has, that are integrated with the shopping center, you can see that there's pedestrian access along this north portion. The entryway here, oops, sorry, the entryway is shared with the shopping center as the drive comes through the shopping center. They have, no gates are proposed for this development, no, no, no resident access gate, so the development is wide open for people to come in. So that is another way that the shopping center is integrated. And you have no fencing here and a lot of landscaping and so forth along the north boundary adjacent to Kohl's. So moving forward, the main thing I wanted for you to get your input on tonight are the building elevations. As overall staff feels that the building elevations are designed, are designed fairly well, but the things that we have concerns on that I believe should be outlined in your staff report are the variety of materials. We feel that there's a lot of stucco walls on these buildings and not enough variation of materials. We would like to see potentially more stone, more of this faux wood along some of these elevations. As I show you these elevations, here's the two, the three-story buildings. As you can see, there's not enough of that. And also the color palette, we're a little concerned with the high amount of white on these elevations. And, and I think, we think there needs to be another color brought in to break up the large amount of white, which can be very highly reflective. And we also think that an additional material could also help break up that amount of white and help reduce that a little bit. So overall, those were the major concerns that we had or some of the concerns that we had with the elevations. Overall, we feel the massing is good. The roof lines are, aren't too bad on these, on these buildings. They have variations of garage doors. They have a lot of windows with varying different sizes and some treatments around the windows. And the side elevations appear to be, to be designed well. A lot of, a lot of good massing and movement horizontally and vertically. We feel that these, this has been designed fairly well up to this point. So here are the carriage units I wanted to show you. As we move through the presentation, and here's the fitness building, which will be in the middle of the development. And here's the color palette, a lot of grays and whites. Like I said, we would like to see the white reduced and, and maybe introduce another color or another material to break that up. So that is pretty much concludes my presentation. As I stated, overall design of the site is some input we would like to get from you and on the, on these apartment elevations as well. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any comments, questions for staff? Commissioner Cavaney?
Yeah, so Keith, on this, I, I think the first thing that needs to be said is because this is a mixed use and we are integrating it as best we can with the adjacent retail, I think the appearance, the color scheme, the, some of the materials, they need to be incorporated. So I don't remember what it looks like, what the, what the retail center looks like, but I would say that's the first thing to do is draw over some of those components to make sure that it does look like an integrated facility. I agree with you, a lot of white, there is not enough variation in the color, the depths of the colors selected. I think, I do like the faux wood and I think there needs to be more of that, like you said, but I also agree that there should be another material in dark color scheme, in dark color tone added here to kind of create more variation. But again, going back, it needs to integrate well with the already approved design of the retail center.
Keith, I'm going to ask you a question on this. If I understand you earlier in your presentation, did you say that there's going to be a future case where the commercial is going to have to integrate with the color and material schemes of the apartment project?
Chairman Anderson, members of the Commission, so there is going to have to be some type of administrative design review approval for the Gilbert Commons Shopping Center that will have to be submitted by the developer who owns the apartment complex property as well in order to amend that development plan. So we're hoping to show, amend the development plan to show the current apartment design. So what we are, are hoping that they will do at that time is, is refresh the color palette and introduce some of those, the colors that this apartment complex gets approved with to the surrounding shopping center. And mainly the shops along, along Cooper, but also in the remainder of the shopping center along Baseline Road as well. I would feel that that would need to be done. So we hope we can get that done at that time with that, during that administrative design review, which is a separate application. So yes, Chairman Anderson, you are correct.
Okay, so that's kind of in opposite of what Commissioner Cavaney has suggested, where the apartment project needs to work with the colors and materials of the retail, correct? So if I'm understanding this, we need to get the colors and materials correct on the apartment project and then in the future, the retail is going to match what happens on this site? Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that we were all in the same understanding as to what's going on with this project. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Young? I'm sorry. Simon.
Keith, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for taking over this project. I know it's got some contention. So when we looked at this before, one of the things that we discussed was the ultimate flow with regards to the retail moving into this space. And we were assured that they were going to work on how that flow worked. And I don't feel like the site plan has changed much. So I just want to kind of get that out there, that, that I feel like there is some flow, but at the same time, I don't know that the site plan has changed at all, which makes me a little bit leery on the other side of the coin with regards to what has just been discussed, and that is the color scheme and leaving it open for the developer to go back later and come back with a design review for the color of the shopping complex itself. I kind of feel like there probably needs to be some contingency with regards to the overall design of the buildings. I actually, I like it. I do agree that there needs to be another color palette or another product, maybe another stone or something to break up the white. I do feel like it's a very project, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? Okay, Keith, you have what you need from us?
Yes, I believe so. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Item seven, Z 20-05, is an LDC refresh. Is that something that we can do fairly quickly or should we recess, go through the public hearing and then come back to that later? Okay. Ava, is that okay with you?
Just trying to get Amy Thames up so she could state how long she thinks that will take to present.
Okay.
I'm available. Let me get that slide up for you here real fast.
Well, how long's your presentation?
It's not real long. I can go fast. And also it is a, just a brief overview to initiate the land development code refresh. And, and if I can share here.
If you think we can get this all within five minutes, we can proceed. If not, we'll do this at the end of the public hearing.
It will probably be 10. Can I have 10?
Um.
If you'd like to wait, I'm more than willing to wait so the applicants can go ahead and move forward. That's fine.
Yeah, because we're running a half hour late right now and I think to be fair to all the applicants, I think we need to do that. You're already home now, aren't you?
Yeah, I'm sitting at my desk, so.
Yeah, you can go watch TV for a while and come back.
No, I'm going to watch the meeting, so, okay, I will wait and you let me know when you want me to present. I'm fine.
Okay, thank you for your understanding, Amy. I appreciate it.
No problem.
All right, so let's talk about the discussion of the regular meeting agenda. Is there anything on the non-consent item that we feel we can move over to consent or anything on the consent that we need to pull off? or anything on the consent that we need to pull off? I see you put your mic on, so it sounds like you, looks like you have something to amend.
I think we could move Guardian Storage up. I don't have a problem with that one, but other than that, I would keep it just the same. I don't see any reason to pull anything off of the consent agenda. But I'm okay with leaving it the way it is as well.
Yeah, I'm okay with the consent as is and I'm okay with moving 18 on to consent. Is there anything else on non-consent we're okay with moving over? Okay, so we'll, we'll move 18 over to consent. So at, right now, we'll recess the study session, come back to it at the regular, after the regular hearing. We're going to take a five-minute break and then we'll call to order the regular meeting. Going to call to order the regular meeting of the Town of Gilbert Planning Commission. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody can still please stand and face the flag.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is roll call.
Commissioner Mackin?
Here.
Commissioner Alabray?
Here.
Commissioner Simon?
Here.
Commissioner Munt?
Here.
Commissioner Cavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Chair Bloomfield?
Here.
And Chairman Anderson?
Here. Next will be approval of the agenda during the end of the study session. It was recommended that we move item 18 to our 20-04 Guardian Storage from public hearing non-consent to public hearing consent. Vice Chair, can I get a motion on approval of the agenda, please?
I move to approve the agenda as just discussed.
My second.
Motion and a second. All favor say aye.
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 Approval is, agenda is approved. Next we'll go to communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commission response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to view a matter commented upon or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Ava, is there anybody online that would like to address the commission at this time?
I'm going to unmute the line. Please state your name if you wish to speak. Does anybody wish to speak?
Gina Lopez.
I believe I heard a name. Let me unmute again and see if you could say your name one more time.
Can you hear me? I wish to speak.
Okay, I heard Doralee. Let me see if I could find. I believe I heard Doralee. I don't see your name. You may be a call-in user. I am going to unmute the two call-in users.
Is this Doralee? That is correct.
Okay, you may address the commission.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name is Doralee Machado-Liddell. I'm a Gilbert resident of probably 25 years and I reside in Lacy Track in the Heritage District. I was on the call earlier and I was not able to view the presentation by the economic department. So that wasn't available to the public through the channel 12, 11. That's one thing. The other thing I wish to address is the fact that the design guidelines, heritage design guidelines were, continued. That is good news. However, I'd like to just say a few words regarding my input as to the lack of input from the residential owners in the Lacy Track. The town has been working on the draft design guidelines for over 18 months. They have not had any meetings with any property owners at all in the Lacy Track. Property owners will be greatly impacted by the design guidelines. I know that the economic department has reached out to developers and the developers have had input, input into the design guidelines, however, the residents have not. I am extremely concerned if this is postponed, that the town would listen to the residents because even though, according to Dan, the redevelopment plan does not affect property, private property owners, that is not so. I live within the redevelopment area and with in saying that, the town has a lot of leeway and ultimately they can claim eminent domain on my property. So it is very important that the town would listen to the property owners and I hope I don't come back to the planning commission because I've been there in the past where this has been an issue and it, it is a pattern and it hasn't changed. So I hope, I hope that the town will have meetings, something to get the impact or input from the residents. And I thank you for your time. And that's it.
Okay, thank you for your input. Ava, is there a way that you can connect or have somebody connect with her, with her
Yes, Chairman, and I believe that some staff members have already spoken with her, but we'll certainly reach out again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Assuming there's no one else in the public that wants to address us.
I will check one more time. I am opening up all the phone lines. Please state your name if you wish to speak. The phone lines are open.
Gina Lopez.
Gina Lopez? One moment, please.
Yes, it is. Can I, am I, do I have clear to speak?
I just want to clarify, are you speaking on a specific agenda item or an item that is not on the agenda?
I specifically want to speak on number 20 and 21 and I don't know if now is the time or later.
Unfortunately, you do have to wait till that, we come to those cases and then we'll open it up to the public and you'll have your opportunity at that time to speak.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to make the assumption that there's no public that wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda. So we'll move along to report from Council Liaison on current events. Councilmember September?
Chairman, I move. Oh, sorry about that. Go ahead. Yep, thank you, Chairman. So we do have, I do have a couple of announcements. This Tuesday's council hearing will allow some limited public attendance, not more than 50 people. And the next Planning Commission hearing that we have will also allow public attendance not to exceed 50, 50 people. Of course, commissioner attendance as well as council attendance is, is optional, can be in person or virtual. And that's, that's, that's my meeting, that's my, my announcements for this time. I do want to also just thank Dan again for, for presenting the vision that the town has for the historic district. I thought him and Amanda did a great job on that presentation and I was excited for, for you guys to see it, really for everybody to see it, the public as well. Thanks.
Thank you. And then just a quick question for you on the Planning Commission for the 50 public members that are allowed. I'm assuming people that are, have cases will get first priority first and then what, whatever's left over from the public is just as monitored, first come, first served? Is that how that will work?
Yes, Chairman, commissioners, staff will be helping to address the public when they show up and arrive at the lobby to make sure that if there are more than 50 people that the ones who need to be in the council chambers for the specific items that they're here for can be. And then when they're done, they can make room for the others that want to attend.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. Next we'll move along to public hearing consent items. All items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The commission may by a single motion approve any number of items where after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commission shall then withdraw that item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar approved under a single motion. Voting on item 12 S20-06 Valvista Square replac parcel 1B and Main Street Commons parcel parcel 5. Item 13, DR 20-67, Novel Vess, Val Vista Square. Item 14, DR 20-33, Und Aerospace Foundation Development. Item 15, DR 20-24, Recon Office Building, which is being continued to September 2nd, 2020 hearing. Item 16, S 20-03, Cordelira Vista Estates. We seem to have a lot of Vista things on the agenda tonight. And item 18, DR 20-04, Guardian Storage. Vice Chair, can I get a motion, please?
Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda as just listed, our items 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and item 18.
My second.
Okay. Motion to approve, second by Commissioner Cavaney. All in favor say aye.
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 Both say no? Consent calendar, consent items are approved. Now we will move along to public hearing non-consent items. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you will, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number in which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. First item will be item 17Z 20-04, the Carson. I have a, I need to recuse myself from this one and we'll hand it over to Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. Item number 17Z 20-04, the Carson. Keith, are you ready?
Yes, just about here. Hold on one second. I'm not very good at this sharing thing, man.
We hope to give you not too much more practice.
Yeah, this is my last practice for the night. Okay. Do you guys see my presentation in front of you yet?
No.
Okay, you will in just one second here. Hold on one second.
Keith, we're seeing a giant gray box. Okay, now it is coming up.
How about now? Okay, good. Phew.
We see the notes, too.
Do you, do you see my notes still?
There we go. There we go.
Okay. You got it? Okay, good. Phew. Okay, so. My next presentation tonight is concerning the Carson PAD Amendment. And this is a companion application, if you will, to a certain extent, to the design review application that you saw in the study session for the Carson development. The Carson, as you, as you know, as I've already stated, is located across the street from the Public Safety Complex and south of the Gilbert Town Square Shopping Center. This development was approved for a PAD zoning by, by the town council on April the 7th and it was annexed and had a general plan amendment associated with it as well. And they received a rezone to MFM with a planetary development overlay to, in order to reduce building and landscape setbacks from 30 feet and 20 feet to 12 feet and to eliminate the required separation wall in exchange for additional landscaping to be planted in the 18-foot SRP parcel along the southern boundary of the property. So, so I will show you that southern boundary of the property with this. Here's the previously approved development plan that you can see, the building arrangements and how things were, were previously approved to be designed and arranged on the property. And. And here's the proposed development plan that the applicant is proposing now that is coming before you. So after the approval of the, the annexation and the general plan amendment and the rezone and the, and after the property owner had purchased the property, SR, they were notified by SRP that piping and landscaping over the ditch, just north of the 18-foot SRP easement, which is where the ditch is in green, and then the red is where the, the SRP easement is, which they were, which they were proposing to landscape completely with a lot of trees and really nice landscaping. They were, they were informed that due to a historic designation that was placed on the ditch in 2001, that they could no longer landscape that 18-foot red space, that 18-foot easement, and that the ditch had to be now left currently as existing above ground. So according to the applicant, the ditch is unable to be piped without having this historic designation removed, which is a lengthy and uncertain process. So consequently, the owner has redesigned the site to relocate all of the buildings that were previously approved, as I showed you on the previous screen. They were approved 12 foot from the property line, as you can see in this exhibit here in front of you. Now this new design necessitates everything to be moved further to the north. So all of these buildings, with the exception of these buildings in the corner, will now be approximately 100 feet away from the southern property boundary. So that, this whole change by SRP required this to all be open and for them to be able to fit required landscaping here within this area. So due to the relocation of the buildings and the landscaping and the amenities that now have to go along the southern property boundary, staff has determined that this new development plan is not in substantial conformance with the development plan approved previously by the town council and that a PAD amendment was to be required. So, so it's important to note that this request does not seek to amend any of the previously approved development standards. The 12-foot landscape and building setback along the, along the property, southern property boundary will remain. They're not proposing to change that. The, what they are proposing do is put a, install a view fence, a six-foot tall view fence along the whole southern boundary of the property in order to provide security for the residents, so for adjacent to the SRP ditch, which is now going to be above ground. So the deviations previously approved were justified by the building's orientation and the landscaping buffers that were provided as a result of the ability to be able to underground the ditch. So in order to maintain the similar benefits to the property that were previously approved, with staff has worked with the, with the applicant to provide a significant amount of landscaping along the southern boundary, which includes the relocated side amenities, additional trees, and also the screening of this building, this building number one with trees. And since the application has been submitted, they have, the applicant has received approval from SRP, as I stated in the previous presentation, to landscape this SRP easement, the 18-foot easement with low-lined shrubs that are drivable, but no trees. The majority of the trees will be, or all of them will be onsite and in these areas as well. And I, and I actually think I have the, the landscape plan in here. Here it is. Here's the landscape plan. So you can see the level of landscaping that will still be provided. And when we get a second review of the design review application, which will be coming for you, before you for a public hearing in the, in the next month or so, you will see all of that landscaping and how lush it will actually be along that whole southern boundary, including the 18-foot SRP easement. So. As I stated, the same deviations will remain in place. Town staff has not had any, any correspondence from the, from the neighbors. And we have had, they had neighborhood meeting requests. They had a neighborhood meeting on a month, a couple of months ago and nobody attended the neighborhood meeting. So that, that went very well. As if, and the only concerns, if you will recall, previously, when it was, the previous zone change went through the Planning Commission and Council, were traffic concerns at the main, main entrance and along Gilbert Road, which, which there was a traffic study done that, that required no additional improvement, improvements to Gilbert Road, no, no additional traffic signalization or anything of the such. So that concludes my presentation. Staff is recommending that you forward a favorable recommendation to the council for this project. And just, I wanted to make quick note of a few conditions of approval. Condition letter K has been slightly modified in agreement with the applicant to where it states that the developer agrees to use its best efforts to landscape the 18-foot SRP easement instead of that they shall do it or that they're required to do it, just to provide a little more flexibility in the case SRP no longer allows them to landscape that, that 18-foot easement. So we have, the developer shall use its best efforts to provide the landscaping within the easement. So to provide more flexibility. And then, and then condition number I states that trees and shrubs shall be planted along the, the south side of unit number one in the southwest corner of the property to screen the building from adjacent residents, which as, per, per this landscape plan right now, it does not show that that building is screened. So we wanted to make sure that condition was put in there to provide the screening of that two-story building from the residents and to further justify those deviations that were previously approved. So that concludes my presentation and I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have concerning this PAD amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. We do have questions. I'm going to lead off with Commissioner Cavaney.
Keith, just one question. Hey, on the above-ground piping, can you describe what that will look like? What, what, what type of piping and how is it going to be installed? Just what is it? I, I'm having a hard time picturing it.
Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Cavaney. So what's out there today, I, and I, I should have provided a picture for you. I apologize so you could see what's out there today. What's out there today is a, is a concrete ditch that will remain as it, in its current form. So if I accidentally said the word piping, I apologize. What we're going to do is pipe, remove the concrete and pipe the ditch and place the piping underground and bury it. But the ditch will remain above ground as is today, like you see in farm fields all over the town of Gilbert.
Okay, so just a concrete line ditch. Got it.
It's just a concrete ditch.
Perfect. All right.
That's correct.
Thanks, Keith.
Yep, no problem.
Commissioner Alabrandy.
Hi, Keith. Quick question for you. Now that this has been identified, just as a thought, will there be like a red flag put on maps in your office to make sure that we don't get surprised by this again? I mean, how many other historic ditches are there in the town of Gilbert?
Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Alabrandy, I do not know the, the question.
That's all. Just a suggestion. Just a suggestion. That's all.
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought you were asking me a question if we were, if we could flag something and, and I don't.
No, I'm recommending.
It's a very good question. I don't have the answer to. I apologize.
Recommend going forward that it's flagged so it doesn't get surprised again. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now I understand what you're trying to say. Sorry about that.
Commissioners online, do you have any questions? Okay. Would the applicant wish to make a presentation?
Chairman Commission Members, this is Sean Lake. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Outstanding. I'm happy to give as short or as long a presentation as you want regarding this proposal. Let me know what you're looking for.
If, if you have anything else to add that might shed some light on this, then go ahead and make that short of our presentation.
Absolutely. We've appreciated working with staff. We kind of feel like we got schnuckered by SRP on this project. They, the ditch is actually on our property and they submitted a historic reservation for, on our property without consulting the property owner. And so we were, we were very, very surprised that this happened. I'm only aware of one other ditch in the valley that is, or one other in the east valley that is a historic ditch. Nonetheless, we're trying to make the best of a difficult situation. I think Keith did a great job outlining what we're proposing to do. We are going to be working with SRP to landscape and clean up around that historic ditch in the town. And so that it is attractive and looks nice going forward between the north wall of the residences and our project, hoping to make it look seamless as well as safe and attractive. We think the plan is much better designed and pushes further away from the residential. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I've got some pictures if you'd like to see. Otherwise, I'll be happy to answer specific questions and we do agree with the revised conditions as presented by staff.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments, questions? We bring it up to the dius. Oh, Commissioner Simon.
I was just going to say, I, I'm, I'm for it. I think that they've done a good job of readjusting and, and moving with it. So I don't know if I need to hold that comment, but I'll throw that out there now.
No, you're fine. You're fine. I think we can close the public hearing. And, or do we need to go online and ask? We need to go online and ask? Okay.
I will open up the public line again. Please state your name if you wish to speak on this specific topic. The line is open. Does anybody wish to speak?
Okay, not hearing any. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it up to the dius. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to make? Or Keith?
Vice, Vice Chair Bloomfield, I, I thought I saw somebody's name pop up on the screen. Andrew something. Sorry to interrupt, but.
That's okay.
Did anybody else see that? Ava?
If we could open the public hearing again and we can just ask the public again.
I am unmuting again. Does anybody wish to speak on this topic?
We should be hearing a lot of chatter.
Just one moment, I'm sorry. Does anybody wish to speak on this topic?
This is Ra-Ra.
Hold on, I'll try to, I'll unmute everybody. I'll mute everybody and try to get a hold of you. Did anybody catch, was their name stated?
Sounded like Ra-Ra.
Okay, let me check if I see Robert or. Okay, I, I don't see anybody with a name that other, anything Robert or Ra or anything.
Okay. We opened it, we'll close it again and bring it up to the dius. Is there any comments or recommendations, motions? I'll, I'll entertain anything.
I was just going to make a comment if I could. This is Commissioner Munt. Do you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Yeah, my only comment was, I remember this being up here a couple of months ago and I remember explicitly saying you have SRP support to do this. And being that I understood it might be a tricky situation, but I do also understand how a designation like this can be somewhat under radar. So I feel like they've done a significant amount and as long as we can hold some accountability to that best effort, I, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Commissioner Munt. Commissioner Cavaney.
Yeah, so I think my only comment, so I, I understand that, that SRP did bless it and then came back after the fact and acknowledged that, that this had. and then came back after the fact and, um, acknowledged that, that this had a historic element to it. So I, I do believe in seeing what I'm seeing, that the developer has gone well out of their way to tweak the site and make it fit the, the new historic requirement. Uh, I don't see any other alterations that would change our previous approval, so I'm, I'm going to vote in favor.
Any other comments? Entertain a motion?
Chairman, make a motion to approve the item on the agenda?
Along with the, the revisions.
Along with revisions is noted?
Thank you.
I'll second that, Commissioner Munt.
Thank you, Commissioner Munt. We've got a motion by Commissioner Allen Brandy and a second by Commissioner Munt. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Oh, Commissioner Simon stepped away. He wasn't feeling well, so he, he took a leave. So we won't have a full contingency up here, but everybody voted aye. We have a quorum though, so. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number 19. We have a presentation by Sydney Bethel. It's on DR 20-58, Asero Val Vista. And this also has the chairman as a... Chairman has a conflict on this one as well, so we'll continue to run it. Sydney?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
I apologize, my mute was going on and off. And is my presentation available on the screen?
It is.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Um, the request for you tonight is DR 20-58, Asero Val Vista. The subject site is approximately... I apologize, my mute, um, keeps muting me automatically. Um, I don't know if that's a technical issue.
You've gone quiet on us.
Are you speaking from your headphones? It could be your headphones.
Can you...
You just went blank again.
Are you able to hear me now?
We can hear you now.
I am sorry, is turning on and off on its own. I do not know what's happening. Um, call this for the technical difficulties, I'll try to proceed forward. Um, I'll just start.
We'll just catch you every two or three minutes.
Uh, Chairman, maybe we can, uh, uh, move this item temporarily until we get our technical difficulties figured out. We may want to get our chairman, um, back on the DIAS.
Fair enough. We've just learned to be patient up here. It's a technical difficulty. Usually they can be figured out relatively quick, so we'll just give it another minute.
Or I will switch...
Commissioner, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay.
Nope, can't hear you again.
Can you hear...
I recommend that we move on to Gilbert Christian School.
Okay, I will turn the time over to the chairman. We'll move on to item number 20, Sydney, until you get squared away.
Move along to item 20, UP 20-0, wait, am I on the right page here? Yes, 20. Uh, UP 20-03, Gilbert Christian School, Titan Solar Field. Ashley.
Thank you, Chairman and Commission Members. Um, if it's okay with you, I was planning on presenting, um, items 20 and 21 together since they're, um, very interrelated. It is use permit 2003 and DR 6, 1625B. Um, is that, is that okay?
Yes, I'm seeing that on the agenda now, let's do that.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, so this is for Gilbert Christian School, the Titan Solar Field. Um, you may recall that back in 2016, uh, the Design Review Board at the time approved the Gilbert Christian Schools located on the east side of Greenfield Road. Um, this is south of, of, uh, Germaine, um, but as you can see on this map, just north of Ryan Road as well. Uh, originally the project was approved, um, at just a little over eight acres, I believe. Um, and what the applicant is seeking at this point for, with the DR portion of the project is to add the area that you see with the red hash to the, uh, master site plan in order to expand their baseball field. The original design review did show a baseball field in this location, uh, but it was, uh, smaller in size than is now currently proposed. They've, um, entered into an agreement with the property owner to expand the outfield into that, uh, hashed area there. So that would bring the total, um, Gilbert Christian School campus to 11 acres with the addition of that 2.29 acres. Um, in addition, they are requesting a use permit to allow outdoor recreational field lighting, um, in the SF 43 zoning district. So that is a use that just requires, um, a use permit to ensure that we can mitigate any, um, impacts of those light poles. So with that request, they are looking at the addition of six light poles. Um, they are proposed at 70 feet high. We talked about this in study session, um, earlier this year. And so I think, um, just for, uh, flow of the presentation, I'll, I'll talk first about the design review so we can, uh, kind of get a grasp on the site first. Um, so as you can see on, on this site plan here, uh, you can see the baseball field located in the northeast portion of the site. The only, uh, vertical construction within this project is the wall that will surround the site. Um, obviously they will develop the, the field itself with, um, turf and some of the required perimeter landscaping. Um, a, a couple other things to point out, um, over the past, uh, week since the Planning Commission staff report went out, um, staff has been in communication with a couple of neighbors that have some concerns with the proposed project. So I want to just point out, uh, those areas of concern at this point so that, um, as, as we go through the presentation, you, you kind of understand the site a little bit better. So the, for use, um, you can see very lightly on the site plan that there is a dashed line in this location. This area between the property line and the dash line is a 20-foot, uh, public access and, um, or an ingress egress easement as well as utility easement. The applicant as part of this project has proposed to relocate the access easement so that it would, uh, come from the north down along the northern boundary of this parcel and then down the east side to serve, uh, the residential lots down to the south. Ryan Road, um, although, although it may appear like it's a roadway, that is RWCD-owned property and that is not actually, uh, a roadway that provides access to these parcels to the south. So this is an important access point for these two properties. Uh, in addition to that, as I mentioned, there is a utility easement here that serves, uh, water for the properties. It comes from, um, down south and then runs up here providing water to these properties and then, uh, further north. So that is one of the, one of the items of, um, concern that, that we've been, um, communicating with residents on. Um, and as I go through my presentation, uh, we do have a proposed condition that I will ask the commission to consider, um, if you are looking to approve this project. So looking a little bit closer at the site, as I mentioned, uh, this red line here is an eight-foot wall. That's the only vertical permanent construction proposed as part of this. They are proposing a mobile court fence, a mo- a mobile sport fence that will be rolled out, um, as needed to delineate the boundary of the outfield. Um, and then this is a batting cage that would also have that mobile sports fence that would be rolled out as needed. In terms of landscaping, because of the location or the relocation of the access easement, uh, the proposed landscaping is not, uh, right on the perimeter of the site, but instead is brought inward, um, a little bit to provide, uh, obviously that access easement, but then still providing the required amount of landscaping. Uh, in terms of lighting, the ball field lights, they are exempt from the code of Gilbert, um, only if they are turned off by 10:00 PM and meet our shielding requirements. And so I know this, uh, site plan is, is a little bit blurry, but it was, um, the one that best depicts the location of those six light poles. So, um, just so you understand where those, those light poles are proposed, the applicant is proposing, um, to utilize Musco, uh, lighting system, which, uh, they are fully shielded. Um, and I think that I'll let the applicant spend a little bit more time talking about the technology of these light poles, um, but they really do direct the light, uh, specifically on the property. They're shielded so that there's, uh, really limited light spill. Um, so in approving a use permit for this type of use, uh, the commission is required to find four findings. Um, so I've highlighted, uh, those here and they are included with, within your staff report as well. Um, so if the commission does believe that the applicant, um, has addressed these four findings, uh, you can approve the request. Um, in addition to that, uh, staff, if, if the commission wishes to approve it, um, we would suggest deletion of con- condition number two, that all light fixtures shall be located out of the required landscape setback. Uh, that was put in, in the staff report, um, based on the code requiring that no landscaping be, or no lighting be installed within the landscape setback. Um, however, that section of the code does not apply to the use proposed. So, um, the commission can choose to remove this. It is not a requirement of the code, um, as was thought when we first read through the requirement. Uh, and then in addition, uh, the commission, uh, can find if, uh, can approve the DR 1625. And as I mentioned, um, we do have a proposed condition. Again, we would, we would ask that the commission delete that, uh, light fixture out of the setback requirement, but add a new condition three, um, to, to address the utility concern. And that condition that we would suggest is that the applicant shall identify approximate location of water service lines of unknown size within the existing 20-foot utility easement with submittal of construction documents. Applicant is to ensure service maintenance and restoration of said water service lines at or better than pre-construction condition. Um, and that's just to ensure that there is no negat- negative impact, um, on those, on those homes that receive their water from, from the lines in that easement. Um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, I, I know that the applicant is available as well, um, to provide additional information.
Okay, thank you for that presentation, Ashley. Does the commission have any questions for staff at this moment on either the use permit or DR case? Vice Chair?
Ashley, uh, real quick, I, it, it just, it seems odd to me that we have an access easement that comes and drives down and around the sports field, making 490-degree turns to get to people's residences. It seems like an odd condition to, to make around a school field for all intents and purposes, so, um, but it sounds like staff is okay with it, but just curious as to really how we came to that conclusion. It just seems odd.
Yeah, the, the applicant has worked with those property owners on the relocation of, um, of that access easement. So the applicant may be better, um, equipped to answer, answer the, the questions about how those conversations have gone. Um, but staff has reviewed the documents and the revised, um, uh, easement, um, language and, and was comfortable moving it forward as it does still provide prop, access to those properties.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any more? Anyone else have any questions for staff? No? Okay, let's move along to the applicant. Uh, if they'd like to give a presentation, it'll have, state your name and, and address for the record and you'll have 10 minutes.
Uh, Chair, I have two gentlemen listed as the applicant. I will unmute both. Randy Hillaby and Jim DeMarcees. I don't know who wishes to speak first.
Randy Hillaby can speak first.
Okay, Randy, you are free to speak.
So clearly we're faced with, uh, an interesting, uh, site here to work with to expand, uh, Gilbert Christian Schools. And we've worked closely with the neighbors to the south to ensure that we could provide, uh, the access to their parcels that they require since they're, um, not allowed to utilize Ryan Road. And we've also worked with them, um, to ensure that during construction, we are protecting the utility lines that run to the north. Um, we have also made sure that we're utilizing some of the best field lighting that we can find that's got, um, excellent shielding characteristics and, um, can really be focused on the field of play. Jim, is there anything you'd like to touch on?
If that is your presentation, uh, is anybody in the commission have any questions for the applicant?
And Chairman, if I may just unmute Jim DeMarcees, I believe he wishes to speak as well. He is also the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the one, the one thing I would like to add is, um, just for you guys to understand that obviously the whole reason we, this additional land is a lease that we have with the homeowner, the landowner. So the whole purpose of having that land lease was for a baseball field. They have been totally aware of from the very beginning because that was the only reason why we wanted to, to, uh, have a lease of the land was to, uh, be able to put in a baseball field. We have been paying that landowner even though we, as we're going through this process, we've been leasing it. So I mean, they've been receiving income based upon it, so they understand and they're great people and we're working with them and, and as we've, as I explained to them, obviously if there's any issue with utilities, we're going to help them. You know, the last thing we want to do is be, uh, you know, cause an issue with any of the, of the landowners around there. We want to be a blessing to the community. We certainly don't want to be, uh, uh, someone who's causing any kind of harm to, uh, one of the neighbors. So, um, they've been great to work with and, and like I said, we've been, we've been paying rent to them for, for over a year. So they've, they've received income and we haven't even used the land yet. So I think we've been trying to work really well with them and we have worked well with them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any questions for this applicant? Not seeing any? Okay.
I have a question. This is Nathan Mackin.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mackin.
Uh, yes, uh, in terms of, uh, the, the lease in agreement there that you have with the adjacent property owners, what, what is that, um, the term that you have? And in, in the, in the event that, uh, future, um, agreement, uh, for this is, is canceled or negated, um, with that lease agreement, uh, what, are, are there, are there any, uh, sort of, um, plans in place for, for mitigating, uh, that with this project to be able to, to alter the project, um, in the event that the, uh, the lease agreement expires?
Well, it's, it's a lengthy, um, lease agreement. I don't know, actually I don't have it in front of me the exact, uh, length of it, but it is a lengthy one. And like I said, it was completely designed for this purpose. It's the only reason why we, we even want to use the land. So right now, if you went out there, the wall's still on our original property because we have no use for the land except for baseball. And I have conversations with them, they were very happy to do it. It was part of their property that they weren't even using, so now they're actually receiving income for, for it rather than it just be sitting there. Um, and, and my last meeting with them, their comment was, we, we're looking forward to attending some of your baseball games.
Commissioner Mackin, the initial period, the term, uh, goes until December 31st of 2029, so, uh, nine, nine and a half years.
All right, thank you. Any, any other questions for the applicants? Not hearing any? Uh, let's open up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case?
We do have at least two people that wish to address the commission. The first person is Gina Lopez. Uh, Ms. Lopez, I'll be unmuting you in just a moment.
And each speaker will have three minutes.
Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted.
Okay. Hi, my name is Gina Lopez. My home address is 2495 East Superstition Drive. My house is located north of the property in question right now. On the map that's currently on your screen, it's the house at the very edge of the top of your screen. So it truly is about two acres away from the current land that's being discussed. I want to start by stating that that we support this project. Truly, it needs to be a win for all parties involved. With that said, my property should not be harmed in any way, nor should we be negatively impacted by it. With also that said, the applicant and Ashley both mentioned that they've been in contact, the applicant said, to the property of the south, which is possibly true, but they have not been in contact with myself to the north, nor my neighbor, who is probably the second one to speak after me, also to the north. And we are the ones who will be drastically impacted the most. So this water line that you're that was referenced, it is a big deal. And it's a big deal because of the history of this property. So if you guys look at that plot map, you'll see all those orange trees. That's an orange grove, a 10-acre orange grove. You'll see the dirt land, right with our houses, that is is old Gilbert history farmland. This 10 acres of dirt and the 10 acres of orange groves were not, over history, subdivided properly, and they are landlocked. It there's the million-dollar house sitting right there on the south that is legendary in Gilbert because it didn't have water forever. It still doesn't have water. The only way that we could get water to our house in 2007 was by running a private water line all the way down the five acres that runs truly that we're talking about right now, from Superstition Drive down to Ryan Road, and then all the way out to Greenfield Road. That is in Gilbert's books. It was approved by Ben Cox. It was approved by Mayor Pettit back in 2007, and again in 2009. And it took us moving mountains to get water to our house when I had an infant at home. So when I talk about the importance of this water line, it is a big deal. I need to be able to maintain my water line because it's a personal two-inch PVC pipe that is buried under dirt. The only way I know my water line is broken or is not working right is because I walk it on a regular basis. If there is a brick wall that that takes a huge chunk of vision away from me and my water line, I cannot maintain it. That's impeding my right to something that I have. Like, I own access to that easement. I have rights to that easement. And nobody asked me about it. Nobody contacted me about it. And for Ashley to say that just recently that that we've been in communication this past week, that's not true either. I have emailed correspondence with her explaining all of this and the history of this land dated May 21. That's two months ago. And I was reassured that there was going to be an ALTA survey done and that all the easements were going to be looked at and all the history of the land was going to be looked at so they could figure out exactly what they were going to do with the easement because everybody knew it was a problem. I didn't hear anything. Two months went by. You know what I got today? I got a phone call from my neighbor. My neighbor told me about the meeting that was happening today with these two items on the agenda that that were ultimately putting up to be approved. And yet, I won't be able to access my water line. I won't be able to look at it. I won't be able to maintain it. I truly, they're going to put grass, they're going to irrigate, they're going to install a brick fence, they're going to have foot traffic. All of that is going to to put my water line, which is fragile. Again, it's two-inch PVC pipe. That is not always going to be two feet underground. There's some spots that it might be 18 inches. We did it by hand. We had permission in Gilbert for this special accommodation because the land is landlocked. It is it is really, really a big deal. So I'm going to move on a little bit, and I'm going to move on to relocating the easement. So in discussions right in May, when we talked with Ashley and brought all this to her attention, I don't know why the due diligence wasn't found then to have a true understanding of what our water lines look like because it is town, again, recorded within the town. I got permission from the town to do all of this. The meters are on Greenfield Road. But at some point, there was a solution where they relocated the ingress egress. So they they and you guys mentioned it. It's really odd that you would drive down a street, and then you would turn, and then you would turn again and enter a property on the other side. So it doesn't fit right. It doesn't feel right. It doesn't look right. And why wasn't the water lines then discussed at the same time of relocation? So there is solutions for that. Why have those involved, right? The applicant, the developer, the engineers, Ashley? Why haven't we gotten involved with the other developments that are going on in the same area? So because our land is is landlocked, and everybody knows it, these 20 acres are a big deal. They are they truly are almost the only ones left that haven't been sold to a developer to come in and put a master plan community or housing development or strip or whatnot. But immediately to the north of that is the mint properties, housing development that's going in. And in part of that process, we were kept in the loop. We were contacted by the planners and by mint properties on numerous bases, coming up with a solution that would work, that would truly help the rest of the acreage so it doesn't stay landlocked for future development of the rest of that land. There is a water line going in at that property where truly the Gilbert Christian School property and the mint property connect, like your mouse is almost on it. There is a water line going in right there. So why isn't that part of our discussions right now of relocating these water lines? Is that something feasible? Is that something doable? Can we all agree to something like that? None of those questions or comments or proposals have been brought to the property owners to the north. And that's what's concerning me. Ultimately, in the reports that were submitted, right, for number 20 and 21, Ashley's report says there's no comment from the community. That's wrong. I have commented to her, I've had communicated to her back in May, and it didn't go anywhere. It says here that that truly, number one, like the four findings you have to have to approve it is the proposed use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of persons living or working in the vicinity adjacent to the property to the neighborhood or the general public. That's not true. Like, you're truly putting me being able to enjoy my health at risk by by these water lines being covered by a whole bunch of stuff, being walked on all the time, by driven on, by equipment, right? You've got tractors going in there, you've got a fence that's being moved and pulled and drug and moved and pulled and drug. And then it breaks, and I don't know what to do. I can't get into your brick fence. Do I have to pay to have the brick fence broke to go get my water line? Do I have to pay somebody to dig up the gravel or the grass? It's a big deal. It does absolutely.
Excuse me, ma'am. This is Chairman Anderson. You've gone over your three minutes. I think we have a good gist as to what your concerns are.
I want to just make on the record two more points. The legal descriptions that have already been signed moving the easement by the the one property owner with the lease. There's four property owners in this area. We are all four separate, but there's only one that signed that lease. The legality of the legal descriptions of that is in question because they are incorrect. Also, the legality of the actual lease and the size, the acreage, that particular owner does not own 2.6 acres. So I will be looking into that as well because, again, her parcel size is not that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Ava, can we move on to the next speaker, please?
Yes, I have James Bryce as next speaker. Mr. Bryce, I will be unmuting you now.
Mr. Bryce, you'll have three minutes. And Ava, can you please keep time? Thank you.
Well, I think Gina probably, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I think Gina probably touched on most of it. I just want to point out, though, that when Gilbert or the or whatever it's called, the Christian Gilbert School, was putting in their wall, our line was broken twice. And our response, we contacted them complaining because all of a sudden, our water's off. And the response was from them, well, send us your last month's water bill and this month's water bill, and we reimburse you. Now I got two more breaks in my water line. And this is going to happen, now Gina, they have a they have a bigger, nicer water line for us and deeper. Ours sometimes is only three inches. I did not build this house. We bought it. We inherited all the problems. We have countless breaks in our water line. And and she's right, we have to walk the line. There's been more than one occasion where when they're doing construction on Ryan, when somebody else drives on my water line that it breaks. So yeah, we got a we got a huge issue with the with our ingress egress to that portion of of our 161st Street. Do you have anything to say?
All right, this is Amy, his wife. So let me go through my notes really quick. So yeah, we have to have access, no matter what, to our water line. That's all right. Like you said, it broke twice already. So having construction directly on it, it's going to break a million times. And we're going to have dirt in our lines, which can cause bacteria, and it's going to be detrimental to our health and safety.
We also have a problem with the lighting, too. We've we've lived here for 11 years, and the soccer complex across the street, which is well over a quarter mile away, has has given us issues to a point to where we had to plant oleanders there just so that we could shade our house from the the glow of the stadium lighting. Regardless of what the spillage, you know, the shields, the spillage and all that, there's still going to be a large glow. There's going to be excess noise. We already have to listen to the kids screaming, yelling, and they have DJs out there all the time. So there's going to be other issues once that baseball field's put in. I think that's all we got.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Is there anybody else, Ava?
Chairman, there's nobody else listed, but I will open up the phone lines. Please state your name if you wish to speak. Please state your name. I don't hear anybody else, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back to the applicant, and they'll give a five, they'll have five minutes if they would like to address any of the comments that were brought up from the neighbors.
Okay, they are unmuted now.
Jim, will you go ahead and start? Is Jim unmuted?
To this project is that we are taking care of the water line. And so that's our intent. I mean, again, I, you know, they've had issues with their water line before we got there. We're going to take care of the portion that we're we're involved with. They have to understand that we're dealing with the land where the landowner is okay with, right? We sat down and said, is it okay if we redirect access? And it's essentially for their access to their to their home. They're saying, is this okay if we change the easement so you access your land this way? The answer was yes. Are they fine with us using this land as a baseball field and adding to? The answer is yes. We're doing everything that we can. We're using, we're buying more expensive baseball field lights to make sure there isn't spillage onto other properties. I mean, I don't, you know, will they be able to see lights? Yeah, they'll be able to see lights, like the soccer field lights all the way across the street. Those aren't going to disappear. It is a school. Yes, there'll be children there, and children make noise. And if I guess if you don't like the sound of children, then I guess that bothers you. But, you know, we're a school, and we think the sound of children is a really great sound. So we're going to do everything we can to take care of them. If there's an issue with the water lines, we will always take care of it. We're certainly not going to put a person in position where all of a sudden, how many water flow to their home? We would never do that. So that's part of that condition that's built into this project is that we will take care of that and maintain that water line. If there's any break, it'll be replaced, at least at the level that they're currently have, but probably actually improve it.
All right, Ashley, can you go to the, can you go to the enlarged site plan for me, please? There you go. Across the north section there of the site, in addition to that access easement, there's also a public water and sewer easement that runs there. And it does connect with the adjoining properties, public water and sewer easement that's associated with the Caddis property. So in addition to maintaining what's existing there and either protecting it in place as necessary during construction or planning an outage to bury it deeper and protect it further during construction, there's also the option there, once the Caddis property brings water to the area, to connect those parcels. The comment that Gina had on the ALTA survey, I'm not really sure what that's related to. We have a title report and ALTA survey to to confirm the size of the property that is owned by Dolores Lopez that is being leased currently by GCS.
Is there anything more you'd like to add?
Yeah, Ashley, can you show the lighting positions? There you go. As you can see, the nearest light to the Bryce parcel is approximately 175 feet from their house. At the property line there, we are below, we're at .2-foot candles. So we are we are below the allowable at that point, and we feel we're we're doing what we can to be responsible and correctly shield the adjacent parcels from the athletic field lighting that is going to be used approximately 130 times from November to May. And per code, they will be turned off at 10 o'clock or to conclude the baseball game that would be underway. That is all that I have.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the commission that have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Cavani?
Yeah, you just mentioned that i- is there is there a plan to deepen some of these these individual water lines? Or what was your comment on that? I missed it.
Yeah, so the first part of the construction is going to be to assess where those lines are, how they're constructed, and how deep they are so we can then, with the contractor, create an approach to maintain their service during construction. And if we have to bury the line deeper to protect them, we would schedule an outage with them as that water is being changed over from one line to the new line that's deeper.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Chairman.
Vice Chair.
In regard to the water line, it sounds like with the access easement, the water line is also going to be relocated to be in the same access easement as what's there. So it will be all outside of any block wall. I'm not aware that there's that you're going to put up a block wall along the back property, are you?
No, so the existing easement is going to be maintained there on the the west side of the additional parcel.
Okay.
For the utilities. So those water lines are going to be maintained as they are. It's just the access easement that gets relocated around the outside of the parcel.
Seems like an easy solution would be just to replace that whole water line and put it all the way around the outside so nobody has to deal with it. But that's just, I can't make you do that, but seems like an easy solution.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Ashley, after everything you've heard, is there anything that you want to add?
Um, no, no, I, I guess I would just have the applicant, uh, I would ask Randy to address access to the easement. Um, there is a gate here in this location, but maybe if he can just talk a little bit about, um, you know, uh, the maintenance of that if there were outages and issues.
Okay, Randy, can you please address Ashley's question?
Yes. So the, the intent of that gate there is to allow, um, the shared, um, easement, um, users to be able to access their lines as noted in the, um, in the easement original document. Um, again, with us protecting it further than it was when it was originally installed, uh, it's our hope that the line would be more, um, safe after we're done with this project than it is currently. Because the, it's in an open field right now.
Is that gate locked?
Um, yes, it is for child safety. Um, we could, we currently have it shown with a fire type HASP device that utilizes two keys. Um, so we could set it up to where they could have access to it. But again, for child safety, um, we would hope that they would work with GCS to schedule a time to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I think it'd be very important for them to have, you know, if, if you're providing a gate to the neighbors to the north where they're used to, um, you know, walk their lines, I think it's very important for them to have access, you know, to that locked gate.
Yes. Do we know what the timing is for the, the Caddis development there to the, um, north of the GCS parcel?
Ashley, are you aware of anything?
I, I don't know where they are in the process, but, um, I can, I can look up some information, uh, while you continue discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, with my understanding that part of, uh, the town requesting the sewer and water easement across the north of our site was to, um, tie in with the Caddis and allow for future development to the east of us where they are landlocked as Gina mentioned. Um, and I, I would imagine at that time, they could, uh, potentially bring their, um, water service up to, up to code by attaching to those new lines.
Okay. Um, is there any further questions for the applicant or Ashley right now? Not seeing any, so we're close to public hearing. Uh, thank you everybody for calling in. We, um, appreciate your input on this and we'll bring the discussion back up to the dais. Um, does anybody have anything they'd like to add? Chair, uh, Commissioner Cavaney?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things that I'll, I'll contribute here. I, oddly enough, I had an opportunity years ago in Gilbert to build a ball field. It was for a church and, um, I actually came to this meeting to, uh, explain what we were doing. We were using the, the most expensive Musco lights that were available and, and the shields that, uh, were protecting it from the adjacent neighborhood. And we were immediately adjacent to, uh, a neighborhood. And, um, then I monitored that ball field, um, for years after that and never had a single complaint about, about light bleed. So I think Musco does make a very good light and I think as long as, as they're using those lights, I don't, I mean, yeah, you could see the glow from a distance, but as far as impact to yards and, um, and homes, it, they weren't an issue. So i- i- it's my experience that probably will not be too problematic, uh, given that they're using the Musco component or Musco, um, units. As far as the water lines, I think it, it sounds to me, first of all, it sounds like they're kind of, kind of, um, uh, perhaps even brittle lines, right? I mean, they're not, they're not really robust copper lines of any kind, so that, that's a concern and I get that. And, and so wanna make sure that they do have access to, to see their lines and, and, and it sounds like GCS is willing to give them access and they're willing to fix the lines i- if, in, you know, there's a problem with them, uh, during construction or even probably even during use. And it even sounds to me like it, they may be, it's not like they were willing to, uh, of course deepen the lines or, or, um, even, even shore them up with maybe stronger materials, uh, if, if anything were to happen in the interim. So i- it could be a win-win for the homeowners if in fact they do get a better line that is deeper, uh, in the out, in, in the end. Uh, of course, that's not guaranteed here and I get that, but to me it sounds like an effort to mitigate the concerns is out there. And, um, I, I, I think, I think that's the best we can ask for and, and, and encourage them to work together throughout the process.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Chairman, this is Nathan MacKinnon.
Go ahead, Commissioner MacKinnon.
I agree with, uh, with Commissioner Cavaney. I, I think they're, the applicant is taking a reasonable approach in terms of, of seeking to, um, improve or, uh, maintain those lines. I think that's, uh, definitely all you can ask for. And I, I think even after the, the project is, uh, completed, I, I would think that there would be fewer instances of, uh, this being damaged a- as opposed to it being, uh, set in loose soil, uh, once the, the ground is compacted and, and the improvements are made, I would think that, um, that line might actually be more secure, um, especially if placed even deeper, uh, in the, in that section. So I, I think, um, the applicant is taking very good and, and reasonable measures to, to mitigate that issue.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm gonna take a decidedly different approach here and I, this, this looks and feels like pounding a square peg into a round hole. And, and although I have to give kudos to the creativity of the school and, and expanding the, uh, the offerings for their students and, and different things, I, I get a little frustrated when I see schools who can come in and say, hey, we're a school and, and they can just shoehorn their, themselves into whatever category there is around them. And some do a good job of doing that and working with the neighbors and trying to mitigate their concerns. It doesn't sound like this has happened here and you have so few neighbors that it seems like it would be a reasonably easy exercise to go and, and visit with each of them and, and, and get their feedback. I, it does not sound, even after six months, like that has occurred here. So I, I, I get frustrated when development comes before us and, and we hear these reports. And so I'm, I'm, I'm going to vote no on this one, but that's just me and I'm, I'm sure it'll still pass, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any further discussion? Commissioner Alabrey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern is, uh, obviously we, we want to balance the development and the, um, you know, the school's needs, but also to do no harm. And I'm concerned, you know, what are we, what is staff, probably a question for staff, you know, what can be done as opposed to verbal assurances, you know, to show more than just a good faith? Well, I wanna see the, where's the good faith effort? And we certainly don't want to create a problem and break lines and, you know, put people's, you know, daily routine at risk. I mean, it surely will get fixed over a day or two, but I'm just concerned about this and I don't know what our, our portfolio is here, our purview, to ensure that we do that. You know, where do we, we're trying to balance something here. And I'm just concerned about where's the proper balance? I, I certainly don't want to try to delay this for months, but by the same token, you know, where do we draw the line to ensure that the, that the existing homeowner is not hurt? That's a rhetorical question and probably one more for staff than anything else. But I, I do understand the vice chair's concerns and I don't wanna stand in the way of progress, but then again too, we see a problem with an existing homeowner and I would hate to have them come back in three months and say, we told you so.
Yes, I, I agree. So I, I see up on the screen right now, use permit findings and there's four facts up there. So in order for this to get approved, the applicant has to show that they're meeting all four. Is that correct? If they miss, if they're only, if we feel they're only hitting three, does that mean it's a? It doesn't pass? So they have to meet all four, is that correct?
Chairman, that is correct. And I, I will just remind you that these use permit findings are specific to the ball field lights.
Okay. Okay, thank you for pointing that out.
Um, but, but with that, I will say that there are also five findings of fact that I, I didn't put them on the PowerPoint, so I apologize for that. But there's five findings of fact that are in your staff report on page five for the, um, design review portion.
Chairman, can I make another comment?
Yes, go ahead, Vice Chair.
I'm just gonna add on to the next one and, or add on to my last one. And that is, when, when we have development occur as a subdivision, they have to meet certain guidelines and requirements and that is very clearly dictated in the town's requirements. But in this case, this is what we would call a Wildcat subdivision, where it was just created by land splitting and lot splitting. And there are no, while it sounds glorious to not have an HOA, there is, it comes at a price and it's being paid for and we, we heard about it well tonight. And so there's, there's pluses and minuses on both sides of this equation where you're not guaranteed because you're not part of a subdivision. There, you get what you get as, as to whatever level of, of care was taken by the developer and whoever developed out there. So cautionary tale on both sides of that coin and with that I'll be done.
Ashley, can you do me a favor? Can you bring up us the site plan and can you approximately show us where this water line is cutting through?
Okay, Chairman and Commission, um, if you can see my screen, the, the easement is a 20-foot wide easement that, that is between the darker property line that you see running here, uh, and then this lighter hash mark. So it runs along the entire length of the property. Um, and, and what I understand from speaking with, um, Gina is that it's located on the, the east side of this 20-foot easement.
Okay, so it's pretty deep into the area that they wanna use. I was kinda hoping it was gonna be on that easement that was east of that masonry wall that they're putting up.
Okay, so I, I think, do we, I, I think we probably have enough information for us to continue this going on. So why don't we tackle the use permit first? Uh, Ashley, were there any, uh, conditions on the use permit that were being modified? I know there's, you, you pointed out two. Are they both related to the DR?
Excellent, excellent. Come on.
Chairman, uh, and Commission, we, if, if the Commission is in agreement, uh, condition number two could be deleted, um, as this is not a requirement for the, um, baseball field. This is a requirement for other types of lighting.
Go to three.
This is part of, as part of the use permit, it is condition number two and then part of the DR, it's condition number three.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll entertain a motion for the use permit, U, UP 20 dash zero three, Gilbert Christian School. Uh, does anybody wanna take a stab at this?
Chairman, I just, one quick question, sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
So, so we're clear, we're only commenting on the lights at this point? That, that the, the, the water problem is not in front of us at this point, is that correct?
Ashley, can you comment on that, please?
Sure, uh, Chairman and Commission, the use permit is solely related to the lights. Um, the next item, agenda item 21, DR 1625B, is related to the site plan, um, and the expansion onto the additional acreage.
Right, so we do no harm here by just approving the lights? Got it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cavaney?
Yeah, so let, let me ask this. So if there, if this easement a- along the west side of the residential lots and now this, kind of the center of left field, i- i- what, if this ball field were not here, what could be built there and how close to that setback could those, those structures or features get? Is this, is this all residential land? It was SF 43? I, I forget what it, what it was. I- is it all residential land? Could a structure be built near it, on it, over it?
Chairman and Commissioner Cavaney, uh, it is zoned SF 43. Um, and so I, I can look up the setbacks for you. I don't know them off of the top of my head. An SF 43, it would, it would depend on whether or not too, it was a residential use or a non-residential use that's allowed in the residential zoning district, of course.
Okay, but it is, it is SF 43 and it does have a setback of some distance off of property line.
Correct.
And nothing can be built on it, okay. And, and all that's being built here is, I, I guess there's a wall that will go over it and then back, but, but the actual water line is predominantly covered by ball field, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Thank you. Um, do we have a motion? And we, whoever makes the motion, uh, just remember about that deletion of number, condition number two, if we wanna do that or, uh, no. But Commissioner Cavaney will take a stab at it.
Uh, Chairman, I, uh, propose to make the findings of fact and approve UP 20 dash zero three, just a UP 20 dash zero three, uh, for the Titan Solar Field, which is a conditional use permit for the 11.01 acres located northeast corner of Greenfield Road and Ryan Road to allow outdoor recreational field lighting in SF 43 zoning, subject to the conditions in the staff report and deleting, uh, number two, uh, condition number two.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion is for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Simon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no.
No.
Vice Chair with the no. Motion carries. Uh, let's move along to DR 16 dash 25. So this one, Ashley would take into account, uh, the discussion of the water lines, is that correct?
That is, that is correct. Um, and if the Commission is looking to move forward approving this, um, we would ask that you add that condition number three to address the water line.
Ashley, it looks like we would need to remove the existing condition number three, which is related to the lights and the setback easement again.
Chairman and Vice Chair, yes, thank you for that reminder. You're correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Cavaney?
Thank you. Yeah, so i- in, in reading this, this new condition three, it does appear as though we will have documented requirement that the homeowners can access their lines and that they will be repaired to a better than condition than it is now. So I think, Commissioner Alabrey, to your concern, is there anything documented? I think we do have that here, right? This condition three, new condition three, does require that. And so I, I'm very sensitive to the homeowner's sensitivity to a- access, that to see their line, walk their line, it sounds like it's a regular routine and, and, and they've needed to do, they have to do that because of the condition of the current line. So I really wanna help them maintain that and it sounds here like that is done. Is, does anybody see anything different than that?
No, I agree with you on that. And it's, it's not gonna be in the school's best interest to have that water line break right in the middle of a ball field. So it's not gonna be in their best interest to do that. They're gonna have irrigation and grass and all that, so they're gonna take care.
Well, and I think to that point, yeah, right now, somebody brought this up earlier, it, it is in what, loose soil right now that will be in, in, in the future, in compacted soil that is irrigated regularly, so it will have a normal water content which will increase density of those soils and compaction. So I think they're gonna have better protection in the long run, as, as was suggested earlier because of that regular maintenance, the regular mowing, the regular, um, moisture content, uh, of that. regular mowing, the regular moisture content of that soil, so I'm seeing it as a probable better condition anyway, even if the lines are not replaced during construction.
Chairman, I have a comment. I am concerned about... Thank you. I'm concerned about the second homeowner's comment, that when they ran their line, they weren't necessarily as deep as 18 inches, and maybe, you know, it fluctuates, doing by hand, it's only three inches. Again, I'm torn, I'm concerned, you know, as a sign of good faith, if the applicant were to say, "Look, while we're ripping up the field anyway, we will go ahead and ditch witch this and run a new line from, you know, top to bottom." It could be expensive if it's PVC, I know, I'm not a civil engineer. That would be a sign of good faith, or to run the line, as the Chair had noted earlier, if it was outside, box it and go outside the wall for access. Again, these are expensive solutions, and I'm not writing the check, so I'm just looking for the balance here, and not turn this into a Hoover Dam project.
Well, one thing they are likely gonna encounter, if they are that shallow, as was suggested, is that those wall footings are going to be in conflict, so they will have to dip those lines at those points if they don't replace the stretch, you know? And Carl, you can probably speak more about that.
I agree with what you're saying, but it sounded like the person who had the three-inch possible line was in a different section, different area, not necessarily across this portion of the ball field. His was different than what Ms. Lopez was talking about, so it... They did say that it comes all the way down that easement, and then along Ryan out to Greenfield, so it could be anywhere in that portion that he was talking about, and not necessarily on the ball field. You wouldn't want that condition on a ball field, especially when you're running mowing equipment and different things over it during construction, you're gonna take care of that and push it down and out of the way, and be down below all of your irrigation anyway, I would think, or what's the point?
Yeah, well, and the applicant did mention that their first phase is to identify the location of these water lines, assess condition, and address it, so, I mean, they're hyper-focused on it, and hopefully this gives them additional rationale to focus on it, and make sure the neighbors are taken care of, you know?
Chairman and Commissioner Cavaney, I just wanted to point out, I've been... You know, the town engineer said we... That they agreed to replace the line, so a minimum depth of two feet, that that would be very reasonable and not costly. So I don't know if that helps anything, but if you do need to speak to the town engineer, I believe he's able to communicate on Webex, but I'm not sure, I can find out if you need to ask questions.
That assessment came from the town engineer? That statement, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Tom.
And I agree with him, if it stays PVC and is just deepened, then, yeah, I mean, it's not gonna be that expensive. It's not expensive pipe, and that's not expensive depth.
The school's gonna put three times that much irrigation line in there anyway, that much trenching, so...
Right, right, yeah. And it's not a large diameter either, so it's not gonna take any special backfill or anything, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, my only comment would be is that if this work is done a priori, as part of the construction project, I would see, I would have no problem with this, but the applicant would have to commit to that, if that's allowed by our portfolio.
Can I speak?
And there is a double gate on that north wall, too, so, I mean, they can locate that gate, so it straddles over those pipelines, so that way the pipelines don't have a footing sitting on top of them.
Fair.
Who wanted to speak that was online? Commissioner Mackin?
This is Commissioner Mackin, it was not me that made the request to speak.
Okay, Commissioner Munt?
Chairman, it was the applicant, Jim DeBarshay, who wished to address the commission.
Well, we've already closed a public hearing, and we're just discussing it up the dais, so I think we'll keep the discussion up here.
I, you know, in this, Commissioner Munt, I would like to ask one thing, and that's, are we talking about potable water here?
Yes.
Okay, and given that this was, these were hand dug, but there was a variance, then there must be some town code that, you know, I guess what I'm getting at is, if these are utilities that are distributing town water, then usually during any construction, you should have to go out and do utility finding, and that would all be part of it, and also that you, clearly by the town code, if these were grandfathered in through a segment of they were allowed to dig them, the code should require any kinds of, exactly what we're talking about, is my understanding, and if I'm misinterpreting the, you know, the legality of these lines, I'd actually be very interested to hear about that, and why, you know, if they were allowed, I mean, in essence, we're saying here, the town is providing you water, these pipes are in essence taking that to you. It seems as though that if they're allowed to do that, there should be some continuity of how that process would take place, and that's maybe a question for the town engineer as well.
Okay, so let's... I wanna get an end to this, we could talk about this all night, so, looking at the conditions that's up on the screen, does everybody feel comfortable that addresses the concerns of the neighbors to the north and is fair to the school? If so, then somebody, let's open it to a motion.
Let me make a motion. I'll make a motion, Chairman, if it's all right. All right, I move to approve DR 16-25B, the Gilbert Christian School Titan Solar Field Site Plan Landscaping, Grading, and Drainage Elevations, with the conditions listed in the staff report, but removing the current condition number three regarding light fixtures and replacing it with the new modifier, or new condition number three that addresses the right of access and maintenance and replacement of the existing water lines.
Not to be a stickler, would you mind just reading it exactly the way it's written? Just so it's just on the record that way?
Okay, I move to approve DR 16-25B Gilbert Christian School Titan Solar Field Site Plan Landscaping, Grading, and Drainage Elevations Floor Plans Lighting and Colors and Materials for approximately 11.01 acres, generally located in northeast corner of Greenfield Road and Ryan Road, and zoned single-family SF 43, subject to conditions one and two, and modified condition number three.
Okay, thank you. Commission, motions for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Simon, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no.
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 Noes are Commissioners, Vice Chair Bloomfield and Commissioner Alabrande, DR 1625 is approved.
Chairman, just to clarify, that modified condition three is the one that you can see on your screen, correct? That new condition, read to read as follows, and then that text.
Yes, that's the one I was referencing in my motion.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, everyone. Let's move back to item 19, DR 20-58 Asero Val Vista. Sidney, do you have all your technical stuff worked out?
I believe so, Commission, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you, and I'm gonna restate that I have, I need to recuse myself from this one and hand it back over to Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. Sidney, anxious to hear from you.
Thank you guys for standing by, I appreciate it, and hopefully, second time's a charm. So the request before you tonight is DR 20-58 Asero Val Vista. The subject site is approximately 14.88 gross acres, and is located at the northeast corner of the Melrose Street alignment in Quartz Street, so Melrose Street is a future street where a half-street will be built with this project, and then Quartz is located over here to the west. And again, the request before you is to approve the findings of fact and approve DR 20-58 Asero Val Vista, which is design review application to construct a new multifamily development. The applicant is proposing a new 328-unit multifamily development with a combination of one, two, and three-bedroom units, with a density of approximately 22 dwelling units an acre. The project has a total of 13 proposed residential buildings, along with seven carriage unit buildings. The residential buildings are located along Quartz and Melrose Street and internal to the site, with the carriage units located prominently along the northern and eastern borders of the site. The clubhouse is located just beyond the main entry point off of Melrose Street, and a secondary amenity area has been located on the western portion of the site to provide a balance of amenities for all residents. The primary access will be off of Melrose Street here, and a secondary access only will be located over here on the western portion on Quartz Street. Sidewalks have been provided internally to the site and also connect externally onto Quartz and Melrose Street. You saw this project at study session back in May, and that was a discussion to increase the pedestrian connectivity onto Quartz and Melrose, and they did add a pedestrian connectivity, if you can see my mouse over here under Quartz, and there is a pedestrian gate here, and then they added an existing sidewalk over on Melrose, and they added an additional one here that connects on. For the landscape, the project provides 40.32% open space, which meets the requirements for the zoning district. As you can see here in the landscape legend, they provide a robust pallet of trees, rough ground covers, cacti, and accents and plants. I'm going to briefly go through each elevation, since it is almost a 15-acre site, there are quite a few buildings on here. Of the buildings proposed, it includes a combination of one, two, and three stories with a maximum building height of 40 feet. Per the applicant, the architectural theme is a modern contemporary style for the site. The primary building material is stucco painted a range of white and gray tones with a brick veneer, comprised of a melody of gray tones utilized as the primary accent material. You'll also see some metal accents in both black and silver utilized throughout the development on the windows and railings and stairwells. Since the project was presented at study session, the applicant has provided a couple items. We had some discussion on the elevations to address some of the Commission's concerns and the staff's, and I'll go through that as I get to each building, but in general, they add an additional accent color, modified the side elevation of Building 5, modified the clubhouse building to include a second story, added additional brick veneer to wing walls within the residential stairwells, and modified the garage door, so I'll go through these as quickly as possible, and we can always go back if you guys have questions. And up in each corner, I will provide a reference map, so you can see exactly where each building is. So this is the main clubhouse building, from the first time you saw this, they did include a second story, which mostly modified this front elevation here to building. Moving on, these are the garage buildings, these are located throughout the site. Since the first review, they did provide a white contrasting color to some of the garage doors, along with some windows up at the top to provide some change and a little bit of diversity. These are the carriage units, so these are the residential with the garages on bottom that are located on the primmers of the site, so this did not change, but they did add an additional color to the site, and this is a new color scheme that they provided on the carriage unit, and you can see which ones were impacted below. This is the first residential building, Building 1. As I go through these, you'll notice that they use the same colors and materials, just in a different massing, so there's a couple different color schemes with the same color palette, and they did add a few additional options with the tan color that has been added in. So here's Building 1, and then here's Building 2, and I will show you, it has two other color options. This is option A, so it's just a change in the original color palette with a different massing, and then here's option B, which is a change of the original colors, along with the addition of that tan. Here is residential Building 3, and residential Building 3 with option B, which includes that new tan. And then Building 5, they did modify the side elevation here to increase some articulation and fancy elevation, since it will be visible from the public right of way. Staff was particularly concerned with this building particular for when residents are driving and members of the public along Melrose, and we just wanted that a little bit more dressed up. And then here are the colors and materials, again, from the top portion here, this is the original colors and materials that you previously saw, and then the new addition of the tan accent. And staff is commending approval of the project, and I'm here for questions. We also, I believe, do have the applicant on the line, Andrew, who can also answer some additional questions for you.
Thank you, Sidney, or excuse me, I'm so sorry about that. No, that was right, I'm getting you mixed up with Stephanie.
Yeah, you got it right.
I'm so sorry, I'm getting you mixed up with Stephanie, can't see your face, and so it mixes me up. Thank you for that. Any questions or comments to staff? Anybody feel like they need to hear from the applicant? Probably should've moved this one up to consent agenda, but we didn't. All right.
Vice Chair, this is Commissioner Mackin.
Thank you, Commissioner, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I just would like to comment, I think we had several recommendations on this last time we saw it, and it looked a lot, lot better, and warmed up the project with the color palettes. I think it was already a good project to begin with, and I think it's gotten even better, so it looks great to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Mackin. Anybody else? Okay, well, we'll open it up for the public hearing.
I will unmute the... I don't have anybody that has asked to speak on this one, but I will unmute the line and see if anybody wishes to speak. If you wish to speak, please state your name. Does anybody wish to speak? I hear no one.
Okay, thank you. The applicant have anything they wish to say?
The applicant is now unmuted and may speak.
Okay. Would the applicant have anything they want to add?
Nothing to add, we've been working hand-in-hand with Sidney, and I think we've addressed all of the Commission's questions and issues.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing and bring it up to the dais. Does anybody have any discussion they want to add, or a motion to make?
I'm willing to make a motion if we're ready. Anybody have anything before I do?
Nope, I think we'll entertain the motion.
No, go ahead.
Vice Chairman, I move to approve the findings of fact and approve DR 20-58 Asero Val Vista.
A second. Hey, we have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Cavaney, and a second by Commissioner Simon, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. With that, we'll invite the chairman back up.
All right, thank you for that. Let's move along to admin items, planning commission minutes, consider approval of the minutes of the study session, regular meeting of July 1st, 2020. Vice Chair, can I get a motion, please?
Chairman, I move to approve the meeting minutes from the July 1st, 2020 meeting.
A second.
Chairman, I'm sorry, there actually is a comment to make to amend it.
Okay.
On the attendance for the study session, I was listed as absent, I don't know if it's that big a deal, but I was actually present.
Okay.
Adjustment?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we did get a motion for approval from Vice Chair, and a second from Commissioner Cavaney, with the understanding that Commissioner Alabrande was here for the study session last month. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Minutes are approved.
Right.
Let's see, we have an executive session here, can somebody fill me in what this is? Is this anything?
Chairman, that is placed on your agenda just to allow you to go into the executive session at any time, that will be standard language on the agendas, but you're not required to go into an executive session.
Okay, thank you for that. So report from Chairman and members of the Commission on current events, I don't have anything to report, does anyone else? Not seeing or hearing anybody, let's go to report from Planning Services Manager on current events.
Chairman, I will keep this very short, I just wanted to note that at 5:38, the unofficial election results came in, and the general plan, it looks like, will be approved with an 81% vote, so thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for everybody that put their time in working on that general plan, and I'm glad to see that their hard efforts and work went into that approval. and I'm glad to see that their hard efforts and work went into that approval. If there's nothing more, we'll adjourn the public hearing. It's adjourned. We'll reopen the study session, and we're going to give Amy her 10 minutes of fame for her case that we prolonged for so long. I hope she's still with us.
Oh, I'm here, Mr. Chairman. I might take 15, though, now.
If you want to take 15, you can take 15.
All right, I'm going to share content here with you. It should be my full screen without notes. Let me know if you see something other than that. So we are here this evening to discuss the land development code refresh. And what we will be requesting is that the planning commission initiate a text amendment and conduct a citizens' review, which is what starts a text amendment. So in no way, shape, or form do we anticipate that the residents or the citizens have had time to review everything because we haven't put the document out yet. So the land development code refresh was started in winter of 2018 now. The mayor appointed a town council subcommittee consisting of Bridget Peterson, Eddie Cook, and Jordan Ray to review and modernize the land development code. So when we kicked off in late November of that year, we were given town council direction, which I will go over. It was also consisting of staff members and the public. It was open public meetings, so anyone could attend. They were noticed, and we did have some residents attend as well as special interest groups who attended for specific topics. There was bi-weekly meetings that occurred, color-coded tracking, live markups in Blue Beam as we talked. The town clerk took minutes. There was a peer code review looking around the country at best practices. And then we're also looking at branding and reformatting of the entire document. So some of the target reminders that the, that the town council directed the land development subcommittee to look at was burdensome regulations, out-of-date regulations. Say it simply, say it so a regular old person can read it. Proactive approach, looking to things that needed to get changed because changing times. Anticipate and think like the end user. I think that's a really important one. Think about what the end user is going to need and want and have as questions so that the code smoothly transitions from one thought to the other and answers their questions. And by the time they're done reading the section they're in, they go, oh, I generally understand this. Now is there anything else I need to look up? And then there'll be links that then take you to any follow-up subjects. Try new ideas, don't be scared. And there were a couple that I will point out that I tried, and some work and some don't work. And pictures worth a thousand words, trying to get new graphics into and embedded in the land development code and modernize. At the bottom of your slide, you'll see in purple an A for consistency. And that's me, A is for Amy, and consistency I added. And as I started going through the code and trying to implement all the different changes that the land use subcommittee requested, as well as just sort of looking for overall simplifications, clarifications, redundancy of texts, I also wanted to add the word consistency because I found inconsistencies throughout the document, and as I was reallocating portions of the code, we had to create more consistency. So I will admit I added that one. So, but I don't think the mayor would be too upset with me about that. So with topic tracking, where did the ideas come from? Well, the subcommittee had some ideas of their own. We also had ideas from past residents or from residents and past applicant input, requests for clarifications that have occurred over time to the zoning administrator or to our co-compliance officers, past applications for PAD requests, planned area development. So all those modifications and conditions that get attached to ordinances, we went back and looked at those. You know, what are consistently being asked? Is the market changing so that there are sections of the code that need to be updated? They're no longer current, they're obsolete. Past interpretations by the zoning administrator, changes to state law, and there was a steno pad that started out way back in 2008, just sort of handwritten notes of things in code that needed clarification, maybe were inconsistent, or just darn right confusing. So I always say, if you have to read it and say, huh, we probably need to rewrite it. So that was one of the sort of points that we looked at every time we would read the various sections. So some of the topics that were discussed, and these are just some of them, because we really did go through, the committee went through every chapter of the code, every article except for Chapter 3, which is subdivision regulations, which we did not make it to that before the group had to be disbanded in March. So they did get through more than two-thirds. They probably got through 80% of the code, and that was bi-weekly going through every single page of the code and talking about various things. And these were some of the things we talked about. Definitions actually became a bigger and bigger topic as we went. Screening, open space, trees, garage sizes, fencing, stepbacks. Many of those you'll recognize as topics that have been discussed over time in the planned area development with concern from neighbors and just general feedback from people. So just letting you know some of the things that were discussed, and we'll be reviewing some of those during upcoming study sessions. A few things that we did end up excluding, parking table for off-street parking. As we progressed, it became very apparent in discussing parking that this is a very specialized topic, and we really did feel that an outside consultant needed to be brought in to update our parking table. And, and in fact, some other elements of the parking section of the code, too. So we did do some updates to the general parking section of the code, and we did add graphics and just update things. But as far as the table goes, we stayed out of the table. So the ratios that are required for required parking were not addressed. Also, wireless communications facility and over-air devices, we decided that those two sections were very specific, and an outside consultant would be required in order to look at streamlining and adjusting those. And also, laws regarding those are changing so often that in some ways it's hard to keep up. So, but we thought they needed particular attention and that it wasn't something that this refresh could properly address in the detail that was required. So those were excluded, other than maybe a typo or the reorg, reformat change, but not changing the intent or content. Animals, this was one of the ones I tried really, really hard to turn into a table, to simplify and put all the animal information in one location. But it became very obvious that it was deeply tied to the municipal code, and as were common area maintenance and enforcement. And until we're able to open up the municipal code and do a refresh on the municipal code, these are some items that we're going to have to put a hold on. There's a few things that were tweaked here and there, but in, in general, the majority of those items, other than just reformatting and sort of smoothing out of certain formats, links, typos, those kind of things, we stayed out of updating it. And then, so key modifications. Obviously, we did the reorg, so we shuffled. There are sections of the code that were brought forward. We started thinking, and in our peer review of other documents, we all agreed that the uses, the big use table, the matrix use table, needed to be upfront. Definitions needed to be upfront. Many cities have combined their use definitions and their general glossary of terms. You don't often see them split into two different sections. And it often confused our applicants and it confused the residents. And so we decided to combine the glossary definitions and move it way to the front. So I had one boss that used to always say, you always start with the definition before you read the code. And in many ways, he was right. You kind of, you've got to know the terminology you're dealing with before you can understand what you're, you're looking at. And then if we could turn it into a table, we turned it into a table. Another thing that was really near and dear to my heart personally was trying to take each zoning district regulation and put all the information on a single page. And I have examples of these to show you. Sign code, putting the sign code into a table and simplifying it and breaking it out so that if you want to know what kind of sign you can have on this kind of property, you can, you can find out quickly and easily in the table. Floor charts, if we could turn five, five pages of text into a flow chart, we did. Embedded graphics throughout, no longer going back to the appendix. Everything is going to be where you need it. And if there's a link to another graphic that we think you need because logically, intuitively, we think you need to go there when you're discussing this topic, the links will be provided. And consistent branding with overall documents. So here is an example of what the Single Family 43 page would look like. So you would have a little write-up about what it is and what the intent of this SF 43 would be, what the feel of that neighborhood would be. And then you have the standard development regulations that you're used to seeing. What are the setbacks? What are the various requirements? Links are provided in blue, so they would be hot links and you can touch them. And then over here, accessory structures are broken into a table and line itemed out as to what you can do with an accessory structure. And then accessory dwelling unit was one of those key changes that we made where we took casitas or guest quarters and secondary dwellings and combined them to one accessory dwelling unit that provides for the kitchen that everybody always asks for, and it just simplifies two different pieces that were always confusing everybody and causing a lot of co-compliance concerns, and putting it into one. That's much more simplified. You click here and it takes you to the supplemental section, and it's all itemed out, too. Then for each of the following, so that was for all the residential is that way, and all the commercial and so on throughout the entire code, all of your zoning districts will have their own individual graphics with all the development standards and their accessory structure rules. And as you move into like the office and stuff, we even add in parking structures and the rules related to parking structures and things like that. So looking proactively to more intensive development for some of the commercial settings. Then, this is an example of the fence table. So it took 17 pages of text and consolidated it into four pages of text, one table, and a flow chart. Not always saying that less words is better, and not always saying that it's key to everything, but we think having it where you can look at your land use, your zoning district, look at what you want to do for what kind of fence. It tells you how high it can be, what's required, whether it has to be solid or not. So it just simplifies all of that. And then here's a copy of a sample of what would be for a freestanding monument sign. So it tells you your various districts at the top. It tells you your maximum numbers, your maximum heights, your design standards for it, sign areas allowances, right-of-way setbacks, build two lines, just to give you an example of what it's like. So you just follow your column down, and we'll tell you the facts. Then moving on to flow charts. Our flow charts are looking like they're going to be in this graphic standard. I did go through this one with our attorney this afternoon, and we're going to make a few tweaks, but just trying to simplify it. And that this was overall, I think this one was five pages of text simplified into a flow chart. So we think we, we're on to something here for simplification and trying to make it easy for someone to understand what a process is. So some of these processes were repeated and repeated and repeated in every chapter, and so we're trying to simplify them in one location and say it once. So where we are to date, articles reviewed, we've reviewed every article of the code, articles formatted and ready for graphics. We still have 41% left to work through. We're reviewing them with our legal staff. Managers are reviewing them or any special groups within the town staff to make sure that they're cross-referenced with other documents. That's the consistency I was talking about. We have engineering documents, we have economic development documents, we have landscape documents and maintenance documents. All of those have to be cross-referenced so that our terminology is consistent and that we don't confuse people when they go from one document to another. Flow charts are prepared, tables are prepared, a few tweaks here and there left. Definitions of terms, we are almost done with combining them and going through. We've added a whole bunch of new ones that we thought needed, the words were in code, but they were never defined, or they were unclear with their definitions. And some of them were just obsolete and needed updated. And then graphics, we're hoping that at the next town council meeting, the funds will be released so that we can move forward with the graphics and let the graphics catch up with the code. But in the meantime, we're going to keep going forward with the text, not holding that up, and we'll try to feed the graphics. And the graphics are supporting, so the graphics aren't going to bring in any new ideas or new thoughts, they're just going to help explain the intent of what's already in the code or what we're adding to the code. So we're going to have another planning commission study session in September. And one thing I'd like to focus on at that one is anything that staff has added since the land development code subcommittee had to disband. So anything that the subcommittee hasn't had a chance to comment on, we're going to bring it to Planning Commission and ask for your comment on those items. And then after that, we'll circle back and start touching on some of the larger items that we want to point out. And then we will release a review, a draft document for public review. We'll hope to have it out for a couple, several weeks as we go through these study sessions. The redevelopment commission study session will focus primarily first on anything that is being amended that would affect the heritage district boundary area. And then as we get to a second study session for them, we'll broaden it out to bigger-picture items. But we'll try to focus them and focus the discussions. There is no way I can review every last change that would occur within this document, but I'm going to try to pick out the ones that I think are the most, most changed or the most interested for or commented on by the public in the past or by various staff members or the LDC committee, subcommittee. Trying to move to a town council hearing toward the end of the year so that the mayor may see her document before she steps down. And, and trying to keep this moving briskly as we move through. So I request that you initiate a text amendment of the land development code and conduct a citizens' review to discuss the proposed development and changes that I addressed. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that presentation. Do we have any questions for Amy on this? No? Not here, Vice Chair, did you have a question?
I just only have one comment.
Go ahead.
It's good to hear, Amy. Your presentation skills are awesome, and I love to hear your happy voice, so glad you're doing well. Great work.
Okay, thank you for that. So Amy, go ahead and initiate the text amendment to the land development code. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this from the public?
Let me check, we only have one person left. Just a moment. Does anybody wish to comment on this? No comment.
Thank you. That covers everything, Amy, that what we need, we need to do tonight, right?
Correct, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now you can go to sleep or go back to watching whatever TV show you were watching earlier.
That would be the planning commission I've been watching.
All right, well, thank you and good night, Amy.
Good night, thank you.
Um, before I adjourn the study session, just want to remind everybody that we do have a adjustment board hearing next week, is that correct?
Chairman, that is correct. Next Wednesday, we will have a board of adjustment meeting to hear an appeal.
And where's that being held?
In this room.
This room, okay.
That will be open to the public.
Okay, and will the public be allowed into chambers at that time?
Yes, they will.
What time was that again at?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. Great, thank you, everybody, for all the hard work today, and we'll see you next week, and we'll adjourn.
Thank you. See you next month.